You will call me into order to give budget reasons.
Budget reasons to the right of the United States of America and to bring all the voices in, a nation under God, in this law, the liberty and justice law.
Let's have some more information, we have a quorum. Approval agenda, change of secrets, removal of items.
So we are going to be removing N, which is the land lease, shared maintenance agreement with the city of Pittsville. Got into contact with Tony Reddy late today, and the recommendation was that he made a few minor clerical changes to it, and then wanted to adjust the date. He recommended we send it to the city to be reviewed by the city council on Wednesday. With any recommendations, we'll then have him review again, who will bring it back to the board and make approval for the board, so that's being removed. I mean, you brought that coming up.
And are we also removing your district?
And just the, well, I'm gonna give a verbal, just a short verbal update on the strategic plan, so.
Okay, thank you.
I just didn't want to do the one with Paul Devlin, which listens to this.
I will to approve the agenda for tonight with the addition of item N, land lease, shared maintenance agreement with the city of Pittsville.
Awesome.
Any discussion on the emergency I?
I.
Opposed, motion carried. I will move to the depository banking financial presentation.
Okay, Jen.
Thank you.
Do they compete?
There's no question. You should have.
Yeah, I wish I had a particular copy as well as a part of mine. Just wanna start by saying I work with a code, I caught it over the weekend, so hopefully you can understand me clearly, but I'll do my best to get yours off of my copying tag, so. But thanks for having us, appreciate the time to be able to share, I guess, what we do for the school district now, and hope to continue that for the long term. So with that, I'll make an introduction, my name is Chad, I've been with the bank for 18 years, I manage the commercial banking team from northern and central Wisconsin, as well as in the primary contact for the banking relationships here for the school district. But that'll turn over to Andy, wanna introduce yourself?
Yeah, so Andy Shalit, I'm actually the regional president for Associated Bank in northern and central Wisconsin, so the characters that I oversee, I moved to Pittsville, our branch, down there.
And my name is Ken Nimmer, I am on the bank side for employees, that can include HSAs, which is the primary cap here, along with other pre-tax, finance, flexible spending accounts, all those things, and covers the state of Wisconsin.
Thank you. And just a quick highlight of the agenda, so we've made some quick introductions of our team here, I'm gonna share kind of our dedicated team approach, what that looks like, a little bit about Associated Bank, who we are, and our commitment to the Pittsville community, and northern and central Wisconsin, as well as just talk a little bit about the current products and services that this school district has, as well as the recommendations that we have as well. And then lastly, I'll turn over to Ken to cover the HSA program, so. Kind of start with our dedicated relationship team, why there's so many people on that page is that we really take a team approach to the banking relationship, we do that to get multiple sources to reach out to, if for some reason I'm on vacation, or I'm on appointments all day and you can't reach me, we have other folks that you can also reach out to for questions and things, if you need something done quickly and timely, we'll be able to get that information. A couple of things I wanna point out here, Nancy Telta is my assistant, she's based out of the Archfield office, she's been at the bank 40 plus years, and she's really my right-hand person, she's my assistant, she does a great job for the bank, again, 40 plus years, the bank's very knowledgeable, I think Pam, you probably worked with her a little bit in the past even, so I just wanna point her out. And the other thing I wanna point out is the treasury management customer care team, you know, everyone kind of dated her number, it kind of scares people sometimes, but our folks are in Stevens Point Center, and they talk central Wisconsin, so they're right in Stevens Point and do a great job for us, they help us with the technical side in some cases, password resets, things like that, and in some cases have more information on the systems than we do, so they're also a great resource. So they're a well-rounded team to help with anything that this school district needs or in a quickly timed manner. A little bit more Associated Bank, we're a Midwest regional bank, we're about $38 million in assets, we're one of the largest banks in the country, but don't let that scare you, we can offer a lot of large products, you know, the big bank products and services, but however, our model is driven really a community bank-based model, so we have a lot of flexibility and a lot of influence to get things done, but we also have, you know, some of the bigger banks, larger products and services to help with any needs that the, you know, that this school district may need in the future or now. We are headquartered in Green Bay, Wisconsin, we are the largest Wisconsin-based bank in the state, and the three green states there, the dark green colors there are, that's our regional footprint for our branch network, we have 200 branches in the state, in those three states, that's for all the communities that we're in. We've been in Wisconsin for 160 years, so you know, we've been a part of this, part of these communities for a long, long time. Any questions about the bank in general? Okay. Next slide, I guess this to me is the most important slide that I can provide to you, is really our commitment to the Pittsville and north-central Wisconsin communities, the first two sentences on it kind of really summarize it for me very well. Associated Bank has a strong commitment to the Pittsville community, we're the only fully full-service branch in Pittsville to support the community. We've been a part of the community since 1937, when you take into the acquisitions that were done over the past years, we actually, Associated Bank has been in this community for about 30 years, to support our community and our individuals in the community we serve here. So some of the donations we've done in Pittsville directly, the school district, the area foundation of the arts, Lions Club, fire department, and then we also allow the branch parking lot to be used for any city events or things that happen in the city, where there's overflow and needs that happen, so that the parking's available for anyone to use at that time as well. And then another thing that we look at is our volunteerism, so our branch folks in right here in Pittsville do a lot of volunteering, and then just some of the things that they're involved in in the local community, American Asian, Lions Club, you know, school field trips, and then central Wisconsin associates as a whole, as of March 23 of 2023, with 65 associates already logged 789 hours of volunteer time in our central Wisconsin communities, all last year, we did over $6,500 of volunteerism in the central Wisconsin market. So we really try to be involved in the communities that we have branches in, and that's a great, that's a big, very, very important for us. And then you can see the last bullet point there, we've had about 300,000 donations in central and western Wisconsin last year, that's just some of the organizations that we support, there's many, many more, just to highlight some of the larger ones that we provide donations to. Any questions about Associated Bank and our involvement in the communities?
I have a question, Chad, in terms of the monetary donations, you have a very impressive list here, but what is the timeframe over that list, this is like in the last 12 months?
Yeah, the 300,000 in the last 12 months.
No, I'm talking about the Pittsville donations.
Um, similar, last, it was in the last year, near year end.
Okay, okay, do you know what the donation was to the Pittsville School District?
I don't, I think it was, I think the last one was around $200, if I remember correctly.
Do you know what it was for, or?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to remember as well, I don't recall, yeah, I don't think I know what it was for.
Okay, I need to.
Yeah, but we're always, I guess, we're always open to looking at donations on your requests, in some cases if we don't, we don't get them, and you know, we don't necessarily know how to do that, so, but please, if you have additional donations for us, we'd be happy to take a look at them and sort of do this apart. Other questions? Good question. Okay. The next slide is really, you know, we are your primary bank, as of this time, we support the primary banking relationship, we also support your HSA program, and we support your credit card program, is the primary things that we do currently for this school district. And basically what this is, kind of summarizes the current banking relationship, the top box there is, kind of you're looking at the month of February, what the average balances were and the activities in the month of February, you gotta go up with the kind of service fees that we charge, and we recently, you know, we're, part of this is reevaluating the relationship, is that we're able to increase the earnings credit rate from 1.75% to 1.25, whatever earnings credit rate is, is a rate that offsets any of the service fees. When we did that calculation, in most months, all the service fees, original service fees for the school district, when we made that change. The other right, the boxes in yellow are recommendations based on the recent conversation we had with Pam and Jason around some of the other services that we were recommending. The big thing here is fraud services, that's the one, that's the one thing that we noticed that there's really no fraud protection on these, the current relationship or the current accounts, and that's really something we highly recommend, fraud is becoming a real issue, a real concern, check fraud, electronic fraud are always people, and fraudsters can take advantage of, you know, public funds, in this case, and it's really important that we do what we can to try to protect that, those accounts, we can certainly help you with that, we have all the products and services and tools to do that, and those are recommended and listed here for you. The other product and service that we recommend is called Remote Deposit Capture, I understand the branch is only at, what, 1.4 miles away from the school district, but what that is, is it allows the school district to make deposits right here in the office, not have to drive over to the branch, and that's called Remote Deposit Capture. The only thing it can't do is it doesn't scan, it doesn't scan cash, so you still have to bring that over to the branch when it's a cash situation, so. That's some of the services that we are recommending, specifically to fraud, that is a, that is a big, big goal right now, I think, in the current banking structure that we need to, that we need to help with, protecting those accounts.
I have one question, the volume column?
The what column?
The volume?
Oh, yes.
So like, cash deposited, is that like, that's how much cash was deposited, or like how many, it was not how many times?
No, it's how much cash was deposited.
Okay, got it, and like, deposit assessment at 434, like what, what does that, I'm trying to like, understand, like, how many times are we interacting with you?
Yeah, I mean, we're pretty much making daily deposits currently at the bank, yeah.
But specifically the 434?
Yeah.
That, so deposit assessment, that's FDIC, so that 434 ties exactly to the balance available, offset services on the top, so that's essentially 434,000, so 434 is how that, how that pulls through, so it's basically per thousand dollars, and that's essentially how the banks are charged for FDIC and how that flows through to the state here.
And then that, you know, that 1.25 on the top is the rate we're giving to offset service charges based on the balance you keep. And the other thing that's not on this page, it's a little farther back, but I'll share it now, is your, you know, there's some, there's current other balances out there in the money market, things like that, we're also increasing that interest rate from 1.25 to 3% to earn some additional interest on the funds, and that's captured in the next couple, in the next page, but just wanted to point that out as well. You know, and the additional services that we're talking about, they're customizable, so you don't have to take them all, you can pick and choose which ones make the most sense to the district and what you're trying to accomplish, but again, we advise, you know, little services because of the situation with fraud going on there. Questions on that? And then the next page just really summarizes, as a thank you for your relationship, over the long-lasting relationship we've had with you, we're able to really discount a lot of the services and products by about 50%, you know, those current, you know, our standard pricing, it's discounted by about 50% of our standard pricing, so we do value the relationship. Again, we also increased the rate on the earnings credit from 1.75 to 1.25, and then we increased the money market rates from 1.25 to about 3% for you as well. Again, a long-lasting relationship, we very much appreciate your business, we wanna keep your business, it's really important to us, and we're open to further discussions about any of this, if you have questions after the meeting or anything like that, we'd be happy to discuss that. I guess any general questions for us now, before I turn over to Ken to talk about our HSA program?
Just have one more question.
Sure.
The increase of 1.75 to 1.25 and 1.25 to 3?
Yes.
Is that already effective, or what's the effective date?
It's, it would be effective pretty much immediately, you know, immediately.
Okay, so it's kind of with our review, like our recording?
Correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay. I have a question, you know, the school district is the largest employer in the community now, and we also have a lot of people coming in for events and activities and things like that, what would be the possibility of having an ATM machine on school property?
Yeah, Jason actually asked me about that, and that's something that's, based on the volumes that the school district would most likely have, you know, really, it wouldn't be a financial, wouldn't be a situation financially where the, you know, we have loss either for the, for the bank, in that sense, we do have a branch that are, you know, have an ATM at our branch right now, but with, you know, I guess the economic, you know, situation with the ATM machine, yeah, that's something that we couldn't do at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there reason for the volume?
Yeah, the volumes and the cost of the ATM unit machine to place it into the, yeah, and then also service it, fill it.
Sure, okay, thank you.
I do have one question, when is the last time these rates, the 1.75 to 1.25, when was the last time that rate and the interest rates looked at, is that something that's just because we are looking at this right now, or is this something that's reviewed annually?
No, it's actually reviewed, the rate environment's changed a lot in the last year and a half, if you remember, what, 12-year run, where the loan rates were at zero, and there was no deposit rates, it was basically zero, 0.02 I think is private was. So, yeah, we probably in the last six months or so increased rates for this relationship prior to this event happening, so we, yeah, we periodically look at it probably, a lot of it depends on how often the interest rates go up, so when the Fed meets, that sometimes ties to how we move interest rates, so it's, right now it's a lot more than it used to be, so it's not, it's a hard answer, it could, you know, it could be every six months, it could be every quarter, depending on what the rate environment does and how fast things move up or down.
Is this something that the district needs to ask for, or it's automated?
Um, in most cases, we try to be quite as proactive as possible, certainly doesn't hurt to ask, you know, also.
Thank you.
I have a question about how much money we think we have in the bank, how much for, like, the school district is insured by the government, if something were to happen to the institutional money?
Oh, you're actually, all of the balances in the bank are all collateralized, so they're all 100% secure.
No matter how much money was put in?
Yeah, they're all collateralized, yeah, correct.
So we have an automated system that tells us, like, so as an example, if your balances were to go up by a couple million dollars this week, we would be notified and apply collateral to your balances to make sure that they're always fully secured, so FDIC stops at 250, anything above and beyond that is what.
So it's the same for a school district, is it just using an individual, the FTS?
The FTS, yeah, correct. Now, an individual technically has a couple other, you know, with a spouse, or with certain ways to get.
Entitled differently.
Yeah, in excess of the 250, where a legal entity, it's able by that legal entity, so individuals have opportunity to get far more than just the base 250, the school district would be the 250.
No questions? Ken, I'll turn it over to you, how much time do we have left, about 10 minutes? Ken, thank you for allowing us to have this conversation with you, so I appreciate it. As far as what we do on the pre-tax side, it's I-P-S, and from an HSA perspective, we've grown and become the 13th largest in the country, but also in Wisconsin, a little bit in Minnesota and Illinois. And it's really good for this, it's the whole gamut of how we deliver our products. So HSAs, FSAs, which are flexible spending accounts, the Penn and Care, limited purpose FSAs, HRAs, and Cobra, we're a full pre-tax benefits platform, and we have the technology piece to deliver that platform, so the school district has a platform that manages all these agencies, and because there's a platform, it allows for a lot of flexibility, how we can do contributions and enrollments from an efficiency standpoint versus if, we're unique in what we do in this space, is what I'm trying to say, very, very unique, we just had a call with the National Partner Day, and they said, most banks don't do this type of thing, so we're unique from a custodian perspective, because we can offer the technology platform, we can do all these sorts of things, and I know the school district is also looking at cost saving Cobra, and we do that as well, as a Cobra fan. Really easy to work with, if you look at a lot of the components of our program, we have a lot of educational tools, we'll even come on site to educate employees, voting HSA's, we've done that with quite a few school districts over this last year, and oftentimes when I start talking to school districts, I'll ask, or the employees, I'll say, who's ever thought of the HSA as being a long-term savings vehicle? And only about 20% of hands go up, and my goal is at the end of that is to get really everyone to understand the long-term savings of the HSA, and really the benefits of the HSA. If you look at all the things you can use it on, you can use it on Medicare, it's long-term care insurance, it's up to 65, you can use that on anything else, and then it gets taxes or income, there's so many benefits of the HSA, and it all comes through education, okay? We can do that, get an open enrollment or outside enrollment, a lot of components to this. So we're unique in doing all these products, so we'll go to the next slide. And with that, what we do is we support school districts, municipalities, and nonprofits re-charge on the cash accounts of the HSA, because we embrace those entities, normally our fee is $3 per account for a balance of less than $1,000, for the school districts we do weigh that, no charge, and you're getting all these other benefits at no charge to the school district. If I look at a school district not that far north of you west, they're with a different vendor, a national vendor, so I consider us a national vendor with a local presence, they're being charged $12,000 for a full technology platform that you get for free at the school district, so there's a lot of value to that. As far as what you get for free, you get the technology platform for participants, you get the full mobile app, okay, and the technology platform and the mobile app, the employee doesn't have to force a bank with Associated Bank, okay? And what I mean by that is you can sync up whatever bank account you have with Associated Bank's HSA from a reimbursement standpoint, so the story that we have is you can have this employee benefit without having to force a bank with Associated Bank, again, that's unique, if you look at your, at our competitors in the industry, if they have an HSA program with some other benefit, they might have you go to the bank to sign up for an account, they'll give you a checking account, and then you'll see maybe a quarter percent, a half percent on that account, okay? With Associated Bank, because we have a technology platform, what's that question? Imagine. So we have the whole technology platform that allows for investments, the whole investment piece is allowed, is what allows that person to grow those funds over time. If I oftentimes ask people in the audience, if you have a 403B or 401K, do you ever take that money and stick it in a T-Lo or put it in a checking or savings account for retirement? I never have a person say yes to that yet, okay? And Associated Bank has a full investment platform for the HSA for employees to grow those funds into retirement, and it's a very easy process to use, but look at your accounts day and the number of people investing, you know how many it is? Zero. Okay, that's because I don't think they understand it, and that's where the education piece comes into play. If you look at the national trends, the national trend is between 70% and 10% people investing, and a lot of those people don't understand it either, okay? One reason I took this job is to really evangelize the industry and to get people to really understand the product of the HSA, and look at the full potential of the day and into retirement, and do that through outside education, no charge to the school district, a lot of our competitors charge for education, come on Sunday, we don't charge for that either. We have a full participant support team, and an employer support team to support the folks, as nice as it is to go to a branch, we have whole separate certifications that are attached for folks, so HSA certified, FSAs certified, Cobra certified, so when your employees call our support team, it's a phone number in the back of the debit card, you're actually getting someone knowledgeable and can help them with the product, I cannot tell you how many times I see incorrect information flowing from this to institutions on HSA's. Somebody asked once, they said, Ken, how much do you think people are incorrectly handling their HSA, and I'm guessing it's 40 to 50%, I think it's that high, because they don't understand, but our people are fully licensed and support and most, and almost, just where all those people are in Wisconsin, they don't have another person in Illinois, another person in Minnesota, but they're pretty much all Wisconsin-based, and we would be 13rd largest in most of Wisconsin. They have four reporting capabilities, so those reports, you take action on the items as far as what education is necessary, so we can look at, see where balance ranges are, and when I was looking at your report, you have several people with multiple thousands, over 10,000, 15,000, 20,000 that started investing, and so when we look at that scenario, education is a whole lot of sense, okay? So we do all this at no charge for the school district, with a great investment platform to really help grow this product into the future, and I really recommend education, and outside of open enrollments, because your open enrollment is stricken through a fire hose, it's just too much information, so I always recommend when teachers come back for the start of the school year, they have those learning sessions, do something like that, but really tap into the educational piece of the HSA's. Any questions on the HSAs? We're just wrapping up here with two minutes, it's good. Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, you guys are all ready?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You get to leave gracefully and not even feel bad about it. Why do you? Is this the HSA people that's investing?
Yes.
He's with us.
Sounds like she's on that.
Right. I've been there, just saying forever, and I'm having a good time.
Same thing as you, you started from home.
No.
And you got the other screen?
Yeah.
This is the, this is the same one.
Yes, and, um.
That's totally right, that's why I brought it in.
Yep, yep. It's one that I'm taking me. Honestly, I think, yeah.
That's why I took it out first.
Yes, thank you.
Jump right in, just want me to stand, sit?
Wherever you want.
Roll down on these school chairs? Oh, there. I don't know if this is being recorded or not, so I'm just saying, anyways, number one, thank you for inviting us to speak about what we can all.
Number one, thank you for inviting us to speak about what we can offer our communities as a community bank here. My name's Dave Prowsey, I'm Vice President, Senior Commercial Lender for Forward Bank based out of Marshall. And I'm Chris Hamerall, I'm our relationship maker. I do all business services, business deposits in Marshall as well. So I'm the sales guy, he's the implementation guy. So he's the guy that really is the feet on the ground and so forth. He's the one, when I get a phone call, I'm like, you gotta talk to Chris. So this is true, so. But again, we're from Forward Bank. I'm gonna touch base a little bit about the history of the organization. Can be a few for who we are, what we do, and what we provide to our communities. So is there a, are you the community's... Oh, thank you. First, I'd always like to start with our mission, pretty simple. We're Forward Bank, and our mission is to move our communities forward. And get it, you know, and that means a lot, you know, when we look at the communities we're in on a fresh basis and a little bit. Our vision is to be the financial resource center, the employer of choice, and the benefactor for our communities as we move forward. Again, the benefactor piece, I think, really comes to play when we talk to groups like you, schools, municipalities, non-profits, it's so difficult to do that. So if you could switch that around? A little bit about our history, I think this is something a lot of people don't know about us. We're called Forward Bank now, had a few different banks. We actually were formed in nineteen nineteen as the Marshall Building and Loan Association. Has anyone seen It's a Wonderful Life? That wonderful building and loan, that's what we were in Marshall. We were formed to help people buy homes, that's our whole basis. And as such, we were formed as a mutual organization. In nineteen forty-nine, we became Marshall Savings and Loan. That's when FDIC insurance was first issued. So we sort of changed who we were, and we picked up the FDIC insurance opportunity. We changed our name to Savings and Loan. Nineteen ninety-three, we became a state-chartered savings bank called Marshall Savings Bank. And then in two thousand and five, really reflected where we started to grow, some management and so forth. We changed our name, I made it a little shorter. We were called Forward Financial Bank, and then that got to be really long, so then we just shortened it again to Forward Bank. So it kind of reflected. Throughout our history, we've maintained what's referred to as a mutual ownership. We are not owned by stockholders, we had no stockholders. We set up like a mutual insurance company, that type of a thing. Our owners are our depositors. Okay? So as a depositor of the bank, you can come to write a new meeting, and you can vote, you know, on our management. So our owners are our depositors. That being said, it's very, very difficult in this kind of a structure to be bought. So we're not gonna be bought by a stock bank. We can't come in and get a BOA or, you know, whatever. Big bank can't come in and buy us as a mutual bank because we don't, we don't have stock. There's no, you can't buy us. We can merge with other banks, we've done that throughout our history. Go to the next slide. So our, sort of a little bit about our growth right now, but I mentioned, we started in Marshall. When I started seventeen years ago, I've been with the bank for seventeen years and eighteen. At that time, we purchased some associated bank branches, this is coincidentally. We would like to buy another one, by the way, you know, I need for sale, Greenwood and Thor. And whoops, ooh, shoot, did I do that? Can't touch the board. Oh, shoot, sorry. It's like our motto type of word, you know? I thought you had... Greenwood and Thor, but that's the time we decided Marshall Savings Bank really doesn't travel well, you know? So we changed them to Forward Financial. Since then, we've, through acquisition and just some organic growth, we go as far north as Park Falls, Phillips. We have, I'm not showing on here yet, we just opened an office in River Lake, Menford. Doesn't show here yet, but we're in Dorchester, Wisconsin, Athens, with the Thor Stanley Greenwood Marshall. All thriving communities, right? One thing these communities all have in common, and something we're very common, is we've got the belief that a community needs three things to prosper. Okay? It needs a good school district, it needs a good bank, and it needs a grocery store. Those three things, if you have that, you're gonna retain business, you're gonna retain people. People are gonna come there because you're providing the basic necessities that communities need, right? A good school district, a good store and bank that's a partner in what's going on, and a grocery store. And that's kind of our philosophy. You know, River Lake, Dorchester, for instance, both of those very recently opened those two offices. They both had larger banks that said, we can't make money in these communities, and they lacked. So they abandoned these communities. We saw some unique opportunities there. We have a model for smaller communities that we think works really nicely. One, two, three, three people, staffs, using technology. Athens was the same way, and we were able to service those communities very, very successfully, so. Next slide, all right, just tell the faces. So again, benefactors for our communities. One of the things we're very, very active in is supporting our communities. I think people, I think that's our reputation. I pulled this picture up specifically because Chris is in it, and not only Chris, but I think there's some folks you may recognize here. This was our contribution to the Pittsburgh Youth Baseball Project. We made a ten thousand dollar contribution to that project just recently, that in late two thousand and twenty-one, just began that. Can you put it to the next one? Just some other examples. One of the things we do in any of our communities that we're in where there's a school district is we have these five thousand dollar events. So we do two events at each school. We do a football toss. You guys stands on the ten yard line. There's a, there's a garbage can, you get three shots. You could throw baseball or a football in to get it in. The school and the person makes the five grand, twenty-five hundred to the school, twenty-five hundred to the person that makes it. If not, we give them a two hundred and fifty dollar check to the school for that. We also do a half-court shot. In the beginning, we do the same thing, we hand out tickets, you draw someone that hopefully can shoot basketball, and we do the same thing, they hit a half-court shot. But it's a great way to, you know, energize the community, we give back to the community, and so forth. One of our other programs we do in a lot of your check presentations is our charitable money market account. It's another way that we give back to our communities. The only account like it in anywhere, what we do is, and I'm gonna try to say this because it gets a little complicated, it's hard to explain. So I'm gonna pick on Julie. Julie personally has a money market account from the bank. We have a list of not-for-profits that also have accounts with the bank. School districts are on that list. So Julie says, you know what, I want my donation, which actually comes from the bank, to go to ODC, you know? So ODC is a, I'm an American, you know, I say, you know, it's a benefactor of our charitable money market account. We take all accounts that have designated that, that not-for-profit. We add up all of those aggregate balances for all those account holders, and then we pay to the charity from the bank twenty basis points of that aggregate balance. What we also do is we allow the not-for-profits to have that same money market account, and they get to designate themselves, so we pay themselves because they get twenty. Can I ask Julie how much ODC got this past year?
Yeah, just under five thousand.
Under five thousand dollars, you know, ODC has served that. We are at about one point eight million dollars total to our communities. And imagine, these are the not-for-profits in our communities, all the small, small communities. So the benefit that we're able to derive, and again, since our owners, we can't pay them dividends because they're not, they own stock. This helps our owners, our depositors, support their communities because they look and they say, hey, I'm gonna donate to this baseball team or the school, or whatever it is, these churches, that helps our owners, if you will, support their communities as well. So just another little thing about partnering with us, some of those projects that we did. So. Some of the things specifically for schools. The previous picture shows, you know, some of the things we do. We do a lot of work in high school and middle school curriculum. Love going out to the schools, helping them. We've got people in all of our communities that are going out to the schools. Anytime there's help for financial education stuff, we're usually putting our hands up. Career exploration, insight, intern opportunities. Pretty typically, every summer, we have high school students interning in all areas, financial positions, everything from our frontline staff to marketing people to credit analysts and so forth. We have an annual scholarship opportunity we offer into our communities. I think Chris is on the scholarship committee this year. I have been asked, I think we gave away, how many are we at now? Twelve? Twelve scholarships to graduate and senior requirements. They don't have to be paying customers, but we want them to go into a financial field, sort of a financial field. And those are five hundred dollars, dollars? Since two thousand and twenty, our staff has volunteered over forty-eight hundred hours into our schools. Kind of impressive. Over that time, over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to donate to capital projects, classroom needs, athletic events, and so forth. And then that five thousand dollars, if you go to Marshall, for instance, and there are football fields, you'll see Forward Bank, you know, on the side, on the stands, Stanley, Menford, pretty much all of them are on your baseball field. So pretty much any school that there's a need, we've been right there with it, so. Next slide. So that's a little bit about the history, kind of just to give you an idea of who we are and our partnerships. Bit of fun with it. I know Jason and Bill Senholdz are our bank president. Very, I don't wanna say aggressive isn't the right word, but loves business development, loves community development. Tries to do, she's a PP, she's a very unique thinker, loves partnerships, loves building those things. So I know he and Jason seem to, you know, they, the ideas were just, it was fantastic to kind of listen to kind of some of the stuff they've talked about, so. I know Chris is the product expert, so I'm gonna let Chris talk to me about specifically what products we can offer to the schools.
So I kind of lumped this down, it's related to the basics, to the bones of it, but also, I mean, it's how we treat our positive accounts as well, we try not to be super creative. So from the checking account standpoint, for the accounts that have to be a checking account through a regulatory thing or through the transaction limits, we offer municipal checking. No minimum balance in it, no crazy fees on it, just municipal checking, it's gonna earn some interest for you. And then that's that. And then the second account I put on there is the charitable money market. Because any account that we can open, that's a savings account essentially, so it meets the criteria of the six withdrawal limits a month max, and has on our box in it, we try to give money market. Why? Because then you can designate the school. It's more money that the school can get a piece of. And so we try to, as much as we can, advocate for that, so. Both those accounts are interest-bearing accounts. So there's a rate tier on there. The rates have been stagnant on these for the last couple of months. I would have some expectation it'll probably increase a little bit. If you listen to what they say, the experts say the rates will continue to climb a little bit maybe for the rest of the year. But overall, these are some of our best-paying accounts. We try to be competitive with the market, we try to stay better or at least the same as what the market's doing as our competitors because as you guys would be deposit, you know, our depositors, you would own the bank, you would have a statement that, hey, we wanna take care of our workers, so that's a big part to us. All right, so banking services, things that you may or may not use, that I don't know what the cost is. So unlike banking, it's free, includes all the bill pay, the transfers, the adding separate users. That's one of the biggest things I like is, you know, Pam's got full access, but she's got one person that needs to have access to this account and this account only, and I only want them to be able to do certain things. She can help, we can structure that, so they only see one account, they only have access to doing certain things. And all that's free, there's no extra charge if you have ten users or if you have two users. It's all built in for you. Checks, we, we partner with a company called Main Street. We order checks for you, first order is free, after that, you just pay for what you need. I will go off this a little bit. Sometimes if you have a local provider that you're like, hey, we order checks from. Heinsen Printing under Marshall before, can we just go with that? Absolutely, you can do that on our own, we don't require any checks from us. It's not so big a force. Democrats are free, most schools don't deal with a lot of Democrats, but it is free. We do in-house printing too, so I literally can have an hour of my order if I wanted to. This is where it becomes important. So a lot of banks charge for the next three services. We don't because we understand it's how you function as a business. So HCH service, if you're payroll, if you're paying vendors through it, things like that. Normally twenty-nine ninety-five a month for municipality, school district, we do not charge them for that. It's a free service. We put limits in place, so we work through that, but that's, that's all we really need to be concerned with. Remote positive capture, so if Pam wants to be able to scan the checks right from her desk, she can do that. We provide the scanner, we do the install, she can just scan the checks right from the desk. She doesn't have to run to the bank. Some people don't wanna run to the bank, even if they're right next door. It's time out there that day, they just don't wanna go. So we do provide that service. We have businesses that have requested three or four or five scanners. They have a lot of check fund. Same thing, we wouldn't charge extra for it, she's part of the service. And lastly, the probably most important service we've been talking about for the last year and a half or so much specifically is Positive Pay. For those who are not familiar with it, it's a fraud prevention tool. In the climate that we're in, fraud is a huge deal, it's a huge conversation. The last thing we want is any business, school, nonprofit, person to get hit with fraud. So we do offer a program called Positive Pay. Adds a little bit more work, but not a ton, to when you cut checks or when you're paying an ECH vendor, and we offer that service for free as well. Couple of things that Dave and I talked about, and we kind of got a little insight from Pam on, but one that comes up all the time with school districts and municipalities is collateralization. So we do have the ability to offer collateralizations so that you aren't fully covered if something happened. We offer this, and I'm gonna say at a negotiating rate. So if you do require it based off your bylaws, or if you would something like, oh man, we never talked about, maybe something we should be doing, we can have that conversation and kind of discuss what would make sense. It's important to us that people feel comfortable at your bank as well, and collateralization is many kind of a big topic with municipalities, so. An HSA, so this happens a lot, I partner with a lot of businesses on this. We do offer HSAs that you can, offer to all those teachers or anybody that's eligible for them, no cost to them. Same concept, they get free Democrats, free checks, it's a free comp. No one and women in the HSA is, just, they can't go, you know? That's a regulated thing, so I'll get there.
Next. So I know one of the challenges for any organization, since we do not yet, and I'm gonna emphasize yet, have record work in Pittsburgh. Cash, what do you do with cash? You know, we're twenty minutes north of you in Marshall. You have cash, you use your deposits, you wanna hang on to at the end of the sporting event. What we will do is we will provide a courier, armed courier, to pick up at no charge to you at your schedule, whenever, if you want it every Tuesday, if you want it every Thursday. Just swing by, pick up all your cash. And also, if you need change, like, hey, I need twenty bucks worth of quarters and a bunch of singles because we got a game and we need to make change, you let us know, and we send the change down with the courier. Again, whatever schedule that you wanna do it for. So pretty, pretty simple, it's really kind of interesting, and I learned this about that. The courier picks it up, they actually need the deposit through ACH right in their van. You never see the cash, never comes to us, that goes through their warehouse. They make the deposit to your account. It's really, that's a really big one. So we don't even see the cash, all right, I'll do that. But yeah, well, swing by and they'll work with you if you know that every Monday morning after we get in football games, you wanna pick up cash, they'll do it for you. So not a problem. We suspect that this would be a temporary solution to a long-term, a long-term solution. I wish I could get into more detail, but I think we've received some really, really cool things that may be happening, so. But I think this would be a big, I know it's always an issue anytime you have cash, you know, companies do have cash, you know? Local, what do you do with it? And that's usually the only time we see most businesses ever come to the bank anymore is if they have cash. But that's not my thing.
All right, I did wanna put these both in here, so these are optional services. So we partner with a company called Elavan for merchant services. So the school has a credit card machine that they want to be able to take credit cards at games, at events, things like that. We do partner with a company called Elavan. Our rep Erin is based out of Stanley, so she's local, and she, we work together as a team to find a solution that works if credit cards, it's, nobody cares cash these days. So it is a conversation that's been coming up is, you know, hey, what do we need to do if we wanna look at something like this? So we do partner with them, and then also, we do partner with a company called Alon for credit cards. Same thing, I mean, if it's something where currently you guys have credit cards available at your current financial institution and you wanted to transition them over, same concept. Alon's probably your biggest company that partners with banks. They're actually underwritten by New York Bank. They work with a lot of banks, so. So the most important conversation is transition planning. So it's always what scares people, is, huh, the work. It's gonna take a lot of time and effort. That's where I come to play. So I spend as much time needed down here, working with you to do the RDC, do the ACH, do the Positive Pay, make sure everybody's comfortable, meet with what you need to meet with. I've gone to businesses and sat there for an entire day just to set up HSAs for the teachers during the schedule. I did that one, we took a school up in, probably like thirty minutes from Marshall. My schedule, I make my own schedule, so. I spend as much time as I need to, to make people feel comfortable. My cell phone is the priority number that I put on everything because if it's six o'clock at night, if you need something, I'll answer. You might have a three-year-old yelling at the back of the nation, but I'll answer. So I... Um, so, uh, I, I tell people, listen, it's, it's all about trust, but, um, I'm here every step of the way and I obviously don't have a problem coming here. Um, but I'm here to, to make it so it's as seamless as possible and make myself as successful as possible for making a smooth transition, so. I didn't wanna take the whole half an hour. I know you guys have a, a long agenda. So is there any questions immediately that come up to stop?
I just got a quick question.
Yeah.
On the, uh, the option of the credit cards, like in the sporting events, stuff like that, have you known it? You said that you're, you're hearing more and more about it from other schools. So if they come to you and say, yeah, we wanna credit, we'd like to have a credit card processor, processor machine, what kind of fees are involved?
That's all, if conversation with the area, it kind of depends on to what scale. So are you just talking to like one machine or are you talking to five? Are you talking for events, you know, every day of the week or are you talking for once, you know, tournaments only? Kind of thing. It just depends on the volume.
Yeah, fortunately, we don't have a lot to do because we refer that out to a third party. But I noticed like, I know for, for Marshall, for instance, um, they use, I think, like I mentioned, it's just called Ticket Sprigot. It's a, um, so I have to buy anytime I go to a game, I need ticket to game. Um, I don't play like boys' baseball and I have to go to tomorrow's. And if I like football on base, football and basketball for sure, you just buy them on Ticket Sprigot. And they're doing everything like, I know, kids have to buy their prom tickets on there and do that stuff. So everything's, and all of them that ties in your, your contract with Ticket Sprigot, they have their credit card processing behind the scene that they use that for. So it's, you're willing to take cash.
Yeah, I will say this, Chris.
It's interesting.
I want just one option of merchant service out there. That Ticket Sprigot has their own K-Band, their own service. So there's probably proprietary ones that are specific to schools. I'm not gonna buy them.
That's great. That's just who you, you can do.
That's me, partner, or what I would, I would advocate for the school one, too, is now be like, no, that's something we should have us look into. Because it's, it's probably.
Are you familiar at all with any of these strategies or not some of these, like, let's say like two, two, they need two, uh, processing machines or something like that?
Typically, you're gonna run a, a per item charge, you know, it's like first swipe. Yeah. It's like two and a half percent with the total block, and that's all based on.
It's like a credit card itself. And here's how many speeds for the machines?
Uh, sometimes not anymore. There's a lot of them where you either buy that machine upfront and it's not super expensive anymore because they just, they're a fat dozen.
Does the school pay that charge or is the person with the credit card?
And the three, the three, so right now, it used to be, it used, it used to be in the past that, um, any, and this was in, any credit card, if you accepted a credit card, you could not pass that fee on to the, to the power builder, to the individual. They changed that about fifteen years ago. They actually changed the rules and allowing anyone now, and that's where you're seeing a lot of, you know, hey, you're gonna charge, we're gonna charge a few percent or more for this or, uh, you know, whatever. So that, that's a decision you guys to make. We found Elavan to be very flexible and, and working, especially with schools and nonprofits. You know, and we can always, we always put it in good word, hey, do your best with them. Um.
And I generally come to that meeting too, so that you feel comfortable because you have the person you've been working with, they're honest, they give you money to drive.
And our advice of like credit card stuff is very similar to insurance. Do you think that's contracted? That every two years at least you should be keeping them honest? You should be requalifying that because there's all sorts of credit card processors out there. And it's just like, you know, it's just like your insurance. Like we all do that every year. You get there, you deal with it. Oh my gosh, this is about that. I'm gonna talk to, you know, call my guy a lot. We go, I advise the same thing for credit card processes. To me, it's, it's a meat and potatoes kind of thing. They're pretty generic. You know, just so they, you know, you want the cheapest one you can find. And so that, that's all it's like.
I didn't, I don't have those great job behind all the selling people.
I would agree.
And if they're not the cheapest, switch.
Yeah. I tell people that all the time. I'm not offended if, if you're like, oh, we really wanna bank with you, but we don't wanna do the credit card because we're constantly on. That's fine. If you partner with them, they'll give you.
Save some money, yeah.
Okay, so we're just talking about like the next big thing, which is, you know, cashless, but there's still some people that like cash.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, we're the, the Pittsville School District is the biggest employer, and yes, we do have a lot of people coming in and out for events. What would be the, uh, possibility of having an ATM machine?
So we've discussed that. Um, so we actually looked at, so if you look at an ATM machine, there's three basic types of ATM machines. Um, there is the basic ATM that you like to have a QuickTrip. I'll use that free kind of thing. Um, you know, that would probably be, it, it uses cash. That's all, that's all it does. It's a cash machine. Um, so that, that's the very basic. Something like that would be what I typically advise, you know, you'll see in bars a lot of times. You know, they just don't, they don't take the credit cards.
That's not the case, yeah.
So they'll have their, they'll have their ATM. Like, well, those ATMs typically are owned by the organization, by that, that company. And they're relatively inexpensive to purchase. Um, so when it comes to that, that's usually a lot of times you'll see them do. They just buy that standard old ATM and there's a two-dollar charge for it. So that's all they're in there. The next thing is a deposit-taking ATM. Now, that's typically what you'll see in most drive-throughs at banks, where you can, you can put deposits in, checks and cash and so forth. And then the third option was we moved to, and we'll be most of us to, it's called the enhanced virtual ATM. So we call it EVA, EVA. And what that is, is it acts as a standard ATM machine. And you can do whatever you want, get cash for the deposits in. But you can also touch the screen and during business hours, a live teller will arrive. Uh, we have tellers in our carfalls office, some in Marshall. So we have fifteen or sixteen of these implemented in our system. And that's how we're, we're working with smaller communities because we can provide service there without having the overhead of each district. We have one and a half people working in the building, and then we have the ATM machine, the EVA, which then that's basically how the person. So that'll do everything. You can make, you know, you can click on it, you put in your ID, fraud prevention, lots of sure you wanna do. So that's the range. Um, an EVA machine costs about a hundred thousand dollars. And we're about six months out right now to get them because of the lead time to deliver these things. So, um, we looked at a spot outside of the door by, by the middle. It would be a great spot for one. Um, it is in discussion with the bank. We're looking at other opportunities in Pittsville that may preclude us needing and enhance it because we may have a real person. I don't know what that timing is, but the, the timing is compressing very quickly.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I can't, I can't get into a lot of details. We don't have a lot of details. But my idea would be that we would deploy the hundred thousand dollars, our costs would be the, the EVA machine in, in.
As an interim measure.
Yes. So, and if not, I would still like to look at and where, where Jason can see, especially like out in your main lobby outside the theater, just to have a standard old ATM where people can, you know, just could cash off, or again. I mean, and they're, they're relatively inexpensive. Um, most of like, uh, most of the ones I'm familiar with, the owners of the door is the cash comes from, you know, you just go up there, you go with the cash. It's really simple. You don't need an armored courier or whatever, that kind of stuff to do with. So.
So the short answer is it's possible.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And just a matter of which, how, you know, our investment in, you know, because if we would do this, it wouldn't be on, it would be our investment. It would be no loss. There's that one spot that we look at outside the doors where we probably have to help, um, figure out how to, how to plug it in and get data to it because you need talent in these things, especially the virtual ones. You get pretty high speed, um, internet access and the system you have that wired in your building. So I would really think that, so that would be an opportunity to do that. But, um, again, from a capital position, if I move that like a hundred thousand to do that, it would be a little bit more, we might use that. We're very excited about how true this is.
Chris, I just have one quick question.
Yes.
And obviously, this would be much more detailed as, as the school would be making a decision, but you, you pretty much told us that everything we would need is free.
Yeah.
Does anything cost? Like, I mean, so like, do we pay a certain percentage on our balance that's there?
The fees would be what we think a fee would be. So, uh, you go negative in the account?
Sure.
If you write a bad check, you get a bad check? Wires? See, otherwise no.
No, it'd be a, that one, yeah.
There's no fee for check transaction and no, for balance, no fee?
There is a transaction limit on municipality of two hundred and fifty transactions a month that is used over there. It's public knowledge when school districts bank with us, because I'm gonna really tell you this. There's a big city that Dave and I work in. They don't hit that limit. There's no way you guys hit that limit. No. Yeah, be like, yeah, it's your first order, fit in there for you. Yeah.
Okay.
So I talk about this kind of in circles, but like, being a mutual way, we don't want to nickel-nad our shareholders. And that's, that's one way to nickel-nad people is by charging transactions, charging ridiculous fees. Um, you need to charge, like I said, the services that you guys need to operate, RDC, ACH, positive pay. To operate efficiently and effectively, you need those. Why would I charge for them?
It also makes our job easier.
Yes.
So I think you'll find the technology that we, that we offer, um, is equal to pretty much anything a lot of it. Things we're not good at are things you probably wouldn't do. We're not good at international transactions right now. Um, you know, we don't have a lot of demand. You guys are setting an international wire up. I'm gonna question. So we offer a lot of that stuff, you know, um, you know, but, you know, it's gonna, you know, do, do otherwise. And you have a copy of the, your actual proposal?
Um, it goes to me, so whichever one of the board members would be selected would get that.
And I, I apologize, some of these came up pretty small on here, so if you need to, I think you can.
I couldn't even see it with my readers. I go on, it's real bad.
I, I mean, I have a free, free, free.
I got it. Yeah, that's what I was like. I got that. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
No, it just doesn't seem real tight.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the student council has had a busy last month. Um, as for the signature, we kind of had a big change. Um, we will now be going to the rubber game. It's a twelve-four game on May tenth. This will be free for all students going. Our tickets included a hot dog and soda. So for those kids that may be on a limited budget, their lunch will be free. And then on our way home, we're gonna stop at the Mayfair Mall in Wawa Tosa, I believe, um, for dinner stop and maybe a little shopping. And then we'll be back at school by a reasonable time for the early bedtime. And then we, um, have also decided on a gift, um, from our class on May nineteenth. It's the Friday before graduation. The senior class will be making breakfast for all of the high school staff as a way to give our thanks for the last four years.
Right, uh, just an update on the upcoming graduation. There's really not that much that's changed on it. The only thing is we decided that keynote speaker is gonna be Mr. Sinkham. We have previously decided on it, but we reached out to him and he accepted the honor, so that, that's what we think has changed.
Um, so far at school in the last, the last week before the school break started, we had the egg hunt contest. Um, I don't know if you believe it, but high school students get very excited when there is an egg hunting prizes involved. So five golden eggs were hidden all throughout either the CTE building here in the high school. And if you found one of the lucky eggs, you got a prize. There's lots of student engagement and lots of fun to have. And then we also had, um, an activity on March twenty-eighth that we hosted. This was after a little bit of testing in the morning for underclassmen. And they, um, students had the option of playing a capture the flag game in the park. It was grades against each other's grades and/or a movie in the auditorium. So we had a lot of students involved and the weather was nicer, which also meant mud. Um, we had a reward given for the moneyest. We did paper play awards as a way to commend some of the standout players. Um, one of them was like the best chicken wrangler. Uh, we did catch the flag using the rubber chickens that we used in your class. There wasn't one grade that won. We played multiple rounds, but it was a lot of fun.
Um, not strictly a student council activity, but NHS induction ceremony. I think this is one of the largest groups of NHS inductees ever. There was like seventeen people, and there was at least one person from each eligible grade in it. And there was, it was just a big success. It was largely student-led. So I, my takeaway was that it was just cool to see. Like, we have a big senior class meeting, but there's even more sophomores going to take our place. So that was really neat to see.
And then we were asked to give a little bit of a recap on our time as student school board members. Um, I really appreciated the opportunity to see a business being in action. It's a little bit different from the 4H meetings where we're still learning hard learning through procedure, as well as I think it helped keep the student council accountable and we stayed active year-round. It was in the past years where it was a little bit here and there, but it, it encouraged the student involvement to stay high throughout the year.
Uh, kind of the same as Maddie. I think it was just good for us to get into a professional environment and see how this whole meeting would work. I also think that, like, for example, the bank presentations before this, that's something that before this I would not have known about or anything. I get to see a lot of how it, what it takes to run the school and to keep the goings up to date here. So I think that was probably the biggest takeaway for me.
As I look into entering that education path, it's a really valuable experience. We are hosting our student council elections for the whole school the week we get back to school next week. And then after that, shortly, we'll have the new student council officers. And we hope to bring our new candidates for next year to the May school board meeting.
Give thank yous to proud citizens.
Here is from the Marshall eight school-wide activity.
You can't see the signature cheating there, but it did.
I was really worried. I heard all the chicken wrangler coming on the radio. I'm like, what would you don't have like chicken.
And then the nice pictures, these are our current NHS members. Most are graduating except for one. And then our next slide is all our new inductees. So as you can see, very. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
You're on my phone to ask you this here.
Okay, we'll move to celebrations.
So, I, I'm going, yeah, I'm going to do the celebration right now because it is a celebration. So you, you. We're gonna do it with all of them. Just makes more sense to. So Maddie has served for ten years on the school board and, um, recognition of your service, you know, several plaques. This is from the school district. Um, an appreciation for your service to the school district. And we also have one from Wasby. I want to move to your placard.
Thank you very much.
I would be remiss if I didn't talk about, um, the work that you all put in as school board members. Um, it truly is servant leadership because, um, I think the thought of running for school board is appealing to people and then when you actually get on, it's work, it's hard work, and it's polarizing topics. And, um, I, I think that, uh, the leadership you provided to this district in the service for the ten years will have a lasting legacy in the district. And I think I've only been back for one year, but I've heard much about it and I've appreciated it when I'm back. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So I promised an abbreviated district administrator update because of the lengthy agenda. The only update I have for you is I just wanted to give you a brief overview of the strategic planning process. So the survey, the initial survey, which was created for us by Wasby, um, if you recall, I shared with you that the services with Wasby running this would have been a little over ten thousand dollars, which we didn't feel comfortable with allocating resources in a tight budget for that. They were pretty comfortable after doing the board development with us that we could facilitate this process ourselves with some guidance from them. So for three hundred dollars, they've supplied the survey. They're gonna collect all the data, data for us and, uh, give it back to us. That survey went out Thursday to all families, staff, uh, when they come out from spring break. All of our six twelve students will receive it. And Dr. Lotzen, we had talked about, Dr. Lotzen and this is Friday are gonna plan. Um, I believe during PPT, we were gonna have, um, the students fill out. Um, I believe during PPT, we were gonna have um the students fill out the survey data because it's important to get that perspective for all stakeholder groups. With that in mind, it's gonna be in the board record tomorrow with a directing people to our website where the survey is posted. We posted it on social media today, and there's a number to call. That's a number for folks who want a paper ballot, not ballot, a paper survey, which we will then mail to them with a self-addressed stand envelope to anybody who requests that. So, we feel like we've cast as wide of a net as we potentially could um to do this, to, to get uh the feedback. Fran had indicated that if we can get around fifteen percent return rate on that, that's valid data. If we can get fifteen percent, I would be shocked if we don't get closer to forty or fifty percent return rate on that. Would be, and it, and the students, we kind of have a captive audience with the students taking the field out of PPT. However, that's a really valuable bit of data through this is the, is the student piece. And you saw the survey, I shared a copy with you, just asked a range of questions about priorities uh for, for all those stakeholder groups. And then Wasby will break that down and kind of show us where there are themes that, you know, all stakeholder groups felt. These five things were the priorities. That will then help us, um, we'll set up the planning committee over the course of the next several weeks to try to find stakeholders from all groups. We will be asking for two board members to be a part of that and then two administrators only because we wanna make sure this is not a top-heavy um uh group. It needs to be um two, two from the board, two from the admin team. And the majority is gonna be made up of staff, uh, families, students, there'll be student reps on there, so uh business owners in the community. We're gonna try to get all those folks a part of this. And then we'll look at that data and then we'll use that to establish those pillars that we talked about. And once we have those pillars, we'll start building uh these sparkles underneath those pillars along with action steps. So, this is exciting. Um, the first step was getting the survey out, so uh more to come. But it'll be surveying, starting to inform the committees, and then we'll set up some meetings and move forward with that. And the, the data that we're gathering from that CISA audit, which actually um is beginning, it's in the process right now, and every single uh teacher within the district will have an opportunity to sit down for a thirty to forty-five minute interview with the CISA folks to kind of talk about their programming. That'll also be then collected by CISA and shared. That can be a part of that process as far as analyzing that data too. So, a lot, a lot of exciting things happening, but that's the extent of my update for tonight. Okay?
Okay, question on timeline?
Yes.
Approximate.
Approximate timeline would be Fran said he did not see an issue with trying to have this completed early in the summer. So, my plan is to try to have the initial where we have established the pillars early in the summer. Um, the thing I wanna remind you about a strategic plan is it's a living document.
Right.
Um, so really effectively, this process will never end. This will be something that, we'll have our three to five-year goals, but this will be an ongoing process that we'll review. And I, I know when we mentioned this, uh, when Fran brought up about the performance indicators, the board seemed very, and I, I was very excited about that option too, about transparency to the community is that we'll put key performance indicators once we establish those goals. And we'll have those on our website with, where we have via uh the uh red, yellow, green, like where are we at towards these indicators? So, we're gonna be accountable to ourselves and to the community with that data. Um, so, so I would, I would expect we're gonna have a good chunk of the work done by early summer. And then uh we'll move from there. The idea would be, I would like to, when we're, the ideal situation would have had this planned before the budget process. Because, you know, once you have the strategic plan, all of your planning is done. I'm gonna be in rela of the strategic plan. So, when you've decided where you're gonna allocate budget money, it's, it's based upon this. The idea is the best time to start is now. So, we're starting now, so uh it's gonna be kind of work in progress. But, but Fran is the, the, giving me a framework, the one he presented to us to follow. He's, he's working as kind of a consultant where he's just giving me a little feedback on how to proceed with the next steps. The one thing I am looking at doing is Fran felt it would be okay for me to lead the process. But he also said that if we can find a community member that we felt would be someone who would be sufficiently, that, that might be even a better process to have someone from the, like, if we can find another community member to lead that process, that might be beneficial.
Well, that leads right on top. That was thinking. Um, I think there are real advantages to having facilitators that are neutral parties. And I, I would like to throw out the idea of possibly someone from NIT State Tech. Or, I mean, I know they have services like that that are not really expensive versus I, I think there's value in having someone from outside, just as Fran would have been an outsider um versus having a community member who is a facilitator.
I agree with you.
I think um NIT State, you know UW extension is another.
Oh, yes.
Often, I mean, again, I'm not sure what they look like today, but I'd actually use the UW extension when they didn't charge. Like, it was a service they actually provided. Again, um, I'm not sure UW extension has gone through many.
Yeah.
Many things, but I mean, that's just another potential option.
I, I have the smallest ego in this room, um, so I am not offended in the least. And I support that because I think that once, you know, I talked about it being top, top-heavy. You know, if, if this is being led by the district administrator, it can start to feel like, well, this is the agenda. And this isn't about me, it's not about, it's about the community and about the school district. So, I, I would support that. The sole reason for the decision was just based upon that cost piece. Um, if, if we felt that was something in our current budget situation we could fit in, I certainly would have been, I think the world of Fran. But if we can find someone that's uh cost-effective, I'll make some phone calls. And if you guys have some connections you can set me up with, I will, I'll make some calls.
I can um send you some info.
Good. That's all I have.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll move to the consent agenda items. Meaning certification, regular and close session minutes from March thirteenth, financial status, resignations and retirements, hirings, and early graduation request for class of twenty twenty-four.
And any questions? I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda items.
In a second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move to discussion and action, and we will start with appointing two school board members to an advisory finance committee.
Pam, you wanna kind of talk about the timeline, we're hoping to do that.
Originally, we had thought we could just do it within a week and have a decision, but we'll need to bring it back to the board in May. So, I envisioning one meeting maybe. You'll get whoever decides if the, the nuts and bolts will triple. So, you can have all the details from each of them. Um, and then pretty much Jason and I and whoever, the two of you will be listed down and kind of hashed through it.
And then present back to the.
And then present it back to the board in May, and then it will be broken on that point. If there's any, like, extra extraneous questions, we would ask both parties probably to respond. But ideally, you'd actually have it done by May. Um, but if we don't get it done till June, we don't get it done till June. So, hopefully, we can get a, a meeting settled at least, when maybe next week and then maybe another one a week after if we need to.
So, we need two, two more.
For sure, one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to.
Yeah, two board members.
I'd be willing, yes. Guys, very willing.
Yeah, I'm working alone, but I definitely can meet next week. Like, no kind of news, I'll be here tomorrow, so this is like a quick thing. Yeah, I mean.
I'm envisioning at least an hour for the first meeting.
And it doesn't have to be next week.
We could push it off a week and as long as we.
Well, I would be, or I could be evening, so just something. But they, I want people to meet next week at all. I would envision we would, we would certainly work around the board members, and I wouldn't. So, you guys can hash it out in our hustle if you need to.
I mean, I don't know, I don't wanna say dissuade anyone anyway, but um maybe if you have experience with one bank or you really don't like the other bank, or maybe you worked with one, if we had like one of each party, but I don't know if you can say who you bank with, so.
I think with both of them.
Oh, so.
I think we just have to, we know that, I would say we're gonna explore all the options and we're gonna keep them up in mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you guys, Julie and Mary are good with that.
Okay.
For sure.
I can allow me, Julie and Mary.
Can you make a motion to appoint them?
Julie good with that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll be in touch with the, we'll kind of go for it. Nice time for it, stuff to do.
Okay, so there's a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the CLA services for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah.
So, we've been with um our auditing team. They, they've been bought out their chain associates and started um, I'm not sure how long they were prior to that, but literally the day I started, the auditors were there. So, I, they do have experience with this group of auditing people. Um, they were bought out recently by um Clifton Larson Allen. But I, I looked at the class and they did go up, but when I, when I thought about it, they're very justified with due to all the ESSR money and the additional federal and state DPI requirements to do all the single, so that's what this federal single audit is. If we have over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in um federal money, that's from food service, that's from ESSR money. And we've been over that, we will be over that again. So, that has gotten significantly more detailed. I think they spent two days just doing pulling invoices. They had to go up and check things we purchased, you know, all rum billing. So, it's pretty intense. And then the um, the basic audit, the um new GASP requirement they brought out the other day when they were here about the new software. We use dozens of software programs, so just, I mean, the, the volume of the research that's gonna go into that now, it's, it's gonna be pretty extensive. So, the rates did go up with that, but they also told me we're still not at where other districts are, are, are sized. So, Jason and I talked about going up to BID. Um, there's only one other firm we could go up to BID with because I, I, I worked with one of the associates at one of the other ones. So, that would be a conflict to address, I couldn't really have them as a bidder. And I, I have an inkling that they would lowball us and then just raise our prices to be standard with everybody else too. So, I'm very comfortable working with CLA. I like the stable ceiling, they know our material. Um, I feel very confident in these numbers. We might get something better for one year, but it's gonna go right back up at the same cost.
What was the ceiling portion of the deal for me with, in the conversation with Fran? She talked about that conflict with them and their services. So, with the rates going up and then the time it would take a, a new firm to be able to get to know our system. And um, we just weighed the advantage with sticking with them with the, with the fee increase and it just made sense.
Right.
And we searched.
I'm sorry.
This seems like a lot of money. However, when they come, there's several people that are here for like a two weeks, correct?
Um, not two weeks, they usually leave here for four days um on-site. But there's like two or three days before, and then there's multiple days afterward where they're working from.
So, this doesn't seem unreasonable.
No, this is probably, when you think of the volume of work they're doing, they're probably doing probably thirty days of hardly twenty-four man-hours a day on our stuff. Um, and the membership audit is zero for this year because luckily, we don't need to have one. Yay, Devon and I are doing the party dance. Um, because that's really intensive for the membership audit. And you're only selected like a chance of one out of four years. So, we weren't selected like my first four or five years, and then we just got them like that for the membership audit. Um, they go through literally every single student. Are they our student, are they somebody else's student, how many days were they here? For regular school year, and then they do the same thing for summer school. They look at our minutes, they look at passing times, they look at this. It's really extensive, so that's why Devon and I were here, that's the happy dance. So, I would like to stay with them um if we did.
How long have we been with them?
Like I said, when I started, they were here as chain associates. And then they've gone off with CLA. I have no idea how long prior to I started here.
And I completely agree because we just love audit time in our business also. Um, is there any best practice though in schools? Like, for us, we're actually encouraged every so many years, even though it is so painful because they know you and it's so nice when they know you. But we're actually encouraged to change auditors every so many years because they know you and just that extra level. So, I don't know if there's best practices.
So, our main auditor is John Travon, but within that firm, they switch us around. So, last year, if you remember, um Amber was here. She was our auditor that first year. And then she got off it, and then you had Stuart, some theater, another, I don't remember slash name, for a few years. And now Amber's back on. So, you've never had the same one for more than like three years in a row. So, within their system, it's totally hands-off for one group of people and then another group of people go on. And I have sat in on different things at the UESP conventions and other seminars, legal seminars. It says you don't need to change if you're happy with where you are because internally, they need to do that too for best practices.
Thank you so much.
Make a motion to approve three-year contract with Clifton Larson Allen, all people, product and services.
Uh, second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we need to set a meeting time for the June annual meeting and budget hearing. So, traditionally, we've just done this the hour before the board meeting. So, we just take the board meeting, that's the second Monday in June, and start at six with this annual meeting and budget hearing. And then do the normal meetings immediately following.
So, that'd be June twelfth. I'm looking at.
Does that work for everybody?
So, that would be at six then?
Yes, start the annual meeting at six and then.
Regular meeting at seven.
Well, we always end immediately following because.
Yeah. Okay.
Time is.
Yep.
All right, any, everyone can make that, that's not.
Deb, do you see any issues with that?
Okay. So, then next we'll move to the step leading scale pay grade for twenty-three, twenty-four.
We put some hard copy as well, if you want it. No?
I'll keep it.
I would take one. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. We make it any bigger, Deb. Thank you.
Stink's getting old.
So, nothing dramatic has changed, okay? So, we still have our three lanes. We have the teachers with bachelor's. We have teachers with master degrees or national board certifications. And we have master's degree, degree required, which is our school counselor and title one coordinator. Those are the only ones right now that require that. Um, the steps, I didn't remove any steps, I kept all steps the same. Um, the first column in each that has four eleven, two thousand twenty-two base pay for each one is what was approved last April. And then based on our discussion, I believe it was already at the last meeting or two already, I think it was last time, um, we were adding one point four percent to base, which all the teachers are getting this year on, on their base as well. So, that's all I did. You know, there's a little rumming in here for, for pennies. The one thing I did, I marked in red, I increased the last four steps of the master's degree required. We don't have any, oops, we don't even draw for a hand, no, I don't think I did that. Um, so, we increased that to mirror the teacher's master's degree because it was just carrying a fifteen ninety-three all the way down. That was something that has been omitted since we started this because all our people were up so high. But we got them creeping down now, so we're up to the higher steps, so we, we mirrored those two. So, this was just the layout of what was requested from the board from the last meeting.
And the only change was that?
This was, this was the only thing that changed for those four steps. Any questions on there?
And once again, we'll, we'll revisit in October, once we have more information, potentially looking at. And once again, we'll we'll revisit in October, once we have more information potentially looking at.
Not so much maybe this at this, that at this point, but.
But the supplemental fees.
Additional supplemental pay, it wouldn't necessarily change the stuff we're like in CL at that point.
Okay, so if anyone feels so inclined, we would need a motion to approve about one point four percent increase to base.
I'll make a motion to approve the one point two percent base increase on the dental length scale pay uh for teachers for about twenty-three point four two.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Move to dental insurance for twenty-three point four.
So I reprinted these as well, I I noticed when I was giving my little presentation in Schpiel in my office this evening that I had inadvertently put the employer's number in the blue section, not the employee's dollar. So I just reprinted those. So the um dental insurance went up a little bit more, but it it actually didn't, it it went up the same as everybody in the industry. There was nothing that the district did or our employees did or anything this time around. It was just a industry increase. Um dentists are retiring, I mean, if you try to get in the dentist office, you're every six months appointments now and every eight months appointments. Um so it's unfortunately just the way it is. So our rates up here on the top is what we are currently in this fifth year, fifty-four thirty-nine for a single monthly premium, hundred and sixty-nine dollars for eight cents for a family. It'll go up to fifty-six dollars, fifty-seven cents per single and one seventy-six. The hundred and seventy-six dollars for twenty cents um for the family. So I mean, it's negligible per paycheck for the employee. Um it's a four percent increase if we keep it at the ten percent. The district overall will see about a forty-five hundred dollar increase if we have all the same number of um users again.
Do we use supplemental?
Yes.
Yes.
So they're used pretty much everywhere, I mean, dental dentals, I don't, there's hardly any dentists that don't use it. So in keeping our percentage the same, the district would be ninety percent, you're forty, ten percent, we would share the four percent. So that would be my recommendation, but the board obviously can do something different if they choose. Is there any questions?
So um. I move to approve dental dental, yes, the district's dental insurance provider with this four percent increase and now change in the policy for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, keeping the district's share premium at nine percent.
Any discussion? All the favors say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. We move to health insurance for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, I could request for a couple of paper copies, so I made them for everybody because they stand sideways. I brought yours, you have all of yours? Did you have the the new big sheet?
I believe, no, that was, no, I didn't know.
So Deb, let's start with the M three piece, please. So M three, the co-op that we're in, um they had a meeting early March. It was um they looked at all of the different, Jason, did you kind of touch on this, I think at your last meeting, I think?
Were you talking this?
Last um your last um update at the last board meeting?
I did very briefly, very briefly.
So the current plan that we're in, um they would still give us, but they were going to give us a twenty-two percent increase. Um we had two that weren't even bid, then we had three that no longer do health insurance.
Okay, so the twenty-two percent, that was what I think is very.
This is our policy that we currently have.
The current one right now.
Right, right, and that's what was currently referred to in the past year because of the consortium.
We're all, we're still in the consortium.
Still part of the consortium.
Yes, yes, so last year, for the last two, three, this is our fourth year, we were in the WCA. So our co-op went into the WCA co-op. So now it would be our co-op is just going to do these two plans and stay out of the WCA.
Okay, I was at seventeen school districts in the consortium, that's all right.
I do too.
And in the WCA, who was like, who were the health plan? What was the health plan?
Oh, UMR.
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 That's the current one we have right now.
Okay, 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 thank you.
So there's nothing wrong with the health insurance, it's just like they have overall experienced significant losses in our co-op.
Yeah.
So our rate across the board for everyone in the co-op for that plan is at twenty-two percent.
Thank you, okay, so the co-op made the decision.
The co-op voted to ditch it.
Because of the twenty-two percent.
We don't have a choice.
Right.
Yeah.
The co-op made the decision to work with M three to look at other vendors.
M three is the co-op head.
Oh.
M three is the co-op head and then there's the seventeen school districts under it that are working with M three.
And just to ground me in that, do we have a choice to stay in the co-op or not, or do we? And I'm not suggesting in the eighth hour to do it, I'm just wondering, do we have a, do we have a choice to stay?
We could, but that twenty-two percent would be mapped because the buying plan is going to go from seventeen.
Because it's soft because it's seventeen schools.
Down to.
Is it still seventeen members still?
Well.
It's a co.
Yeah.
I think it's considered a co-op.
A co-op.
So it went from the consortium to the co-op.
Yes, we needed to stay in the consortium, I believe, for two years and then we could file for co-op.
Julie, the the way the M three folks explained it that I found very helpful to me was they are not like a district our size, if you had one catastrophic event with a single employee, would what they would do to your rates the next year would go up thirty or forty percent.
That is what happened to us, that's why.
Right, yeah. So what they.
The thing that happened to us, they just went, are we transitioned to a bigger? And the only reason I'm bringing it up is because when I see this, um you know, we're in a very unique situation where we have employees that my guess is use both networks. Like, you know, we're in an odd spot here in central Wisconsin where we have two competing health networks that their plans don't typically play nice with each other. Like, I mean, if you're in the Aspiris health plan, Aspiris, you get great support from Aspiris, but you can't work in Marshallfield.
Well, that's taken care of, so.
Yeah, they're going to have, that's one of the things.
Just wait, we're not, we're not even sure what they're offering, it's just yet, so I'll give you a second.
We felt very strongly about one of the reasons we like this is it will give employees the option, Julie, effectively, they can keep almost to a T everything that we have right now in UMR by utilizing both Aspiris and the clinic. It's just at a slightly different rate, so folks will be able to pick which of those plateaus they want to go to at cost to the employee.
Right, so.
Pam, I'll go through.
So you can choose a choice of the seven.
That is correct.
So you can pick that, okay. So it's like you pick a narrow network.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Yeah, we'll get that, that is.
And I this might answer all your questions.
So.
Okay.
So what we have now, the co-op said, we're not doing this, they go in and that's the way it is, they're not doing this anymore. This goes bye-bye June thirty. The two options the district is going to have, can you scooch it down a little bit? Can you scooch it down so I can see the top a little bit, there you go. So we're going to have two plans, we're going to have a signature plan, which I'm going to, is is lightly narrow network. So there's more in it than Justice Fires, um all of their affiliates are in there, Bonin Joint, um GI associates, um ENTM associates, there was like eight different affiliates.
Mm-hmm.
Um and the employees have all that information, we've already had one meeting, we'll have another meeting, the employees will get everything, they'll have a a place to contact or a the email link that they, excuse me, a hotlink, a website where they can go and put their doctors' names and see if they're covered. But also in here, we've got um Mayo and um, what man ship?
Rochester.
Rochester.
Yeah.
Um Mayo was in there, um there was a couple of other ones, I believe you know Madison was in there? In this narrow network, okay, so can you scroll down just a smidge?
Pam, whatever you're saying, I believe the only one that was not included was the Marshallfield Clinic.
Marshallfield Clinic, Mayo and Volklar.
Those were the only three that came in different.
Weston, Weston, Mayo and Weston, I think was in there.
Nothing was Volklar.
Okay, it was the other Mayo, not the big Mayo, the other Mayo.
Correct.
Um so if the employees stay with that, it'll be about a negative two percent increase, so the premiums are going to go down. On the three-tier one, can you scooch up a little more, Deb, thank you. So the choice three tier, there, now what I, we originally shared out with the employees changed a little bit because they had a non-HSA qualifying deductible, so we had to up the deductible a little bit on our first tier. So the first tier here, everything in white is everything in this signature network, okay? Everything in yellow is all of this provider plus Marshallfield Clinic plus the um other Mayo. Everything in green means you can go anywhere in the United States you want to go. So if there's a specialist that's doing some specialized brain cancer surgery someplace in the country and you want to go there, you can go there, your deductible would be a little bit higher, your out-of-pocket would be a little bit higher, but you could still go in. Now, these are, they explain it as like a fully deductible. So if you go to Marshallfield Clinic or Hospital and you spend fifteen hundred dollars as an individual, you've met your deduction, excuse me, your deductible now if you go to Aspiris or something else. You don't have to meet the full two thousand unless you went back to Marshallfield Clinic or Hospital, then you would need to, with those services, meet two thousand dollars. So the deduct, the, can you then just roll down again, Deb, a little bit further? So all the other stuff for the most part, other than, you know, the seventy percent after deductible um portion of routine and preventative care is fairly consistent, it's not all a hundred percent. The the medication component is identical. Um but the important thing is they're both HSA-qualified plans. The increase in premium for the choice three tier is five point six four percent. Which is, if you think about it, this this is almost the same, it's got more, a little bit more out of pocket than what our old one did, but for most people would probably still be a class difference. Unless you know you're always going to meet your deductible, then it may not be. So Deb, then if we can go to the um scenario one options, please. So what I did to make it, um, oh, they're crooked here too. Okay. So what I did on all of these, so each one, there's a scenario one signature and scenario one choice three. So if you just concentrate first on the scenario one, everything on top of every single document is going to be what we have now, okay? So you can always compare to what we have now. So our scenario one is to keeping our employer and employee percent the same. We're going to have a fifteen hundred and a three thousand dollar deductible and we have the same HSA employer contribution. So Deb, can you bring up this, please? So those dollar amounts are here then, so the, scroll just a little bit further, break, uh so we can get the um extra cost to the district. A little bit further down, right there, right there, I see. Um so the total cost then to the employer will be the one point four seven nine. Um that's keeping HSA the similar and all these numbers are what we have currently in enrollment. Okay, so the numbers, if you look at M three, is a little off because they took February's. So this is our current enrollment. So if we go down this way a little bit more.
Pam, clarification?
Yes.
We won't, myself, we won't, I think, this does not include, because we haven't done our open enrollment, so these are the projections as of right now. It's not including with that opt-out at the board, or the the opt-out option. This is planning without that, as if that, we wouldn't have any individuals choosing the opt-out.
Right, so each one of these scenarios is saying, everybody's doing this or everybody's doing that. So we are going to be somewhere in between.
Yeah.
So mid-sea time of it.
So if Pam's projection is related to the opt-out that she presented last time were to come to fruition, Deb would also have a positive in there on these numbers that you're seeing today.
Correct, so Pam, um this first option that we're giving is column A, correct? Like the first column on the M three, the WCA, right?
No, that's gone, oh, what do you mean, first option?
Here.
The top of every, top of every single one of these sheets is identical and that's what we have right now. Okay?
Got it, but that's not actually an option.
No, that's the longer option, they're only comparing cost for what we are experiencing right now.
Okay, okay, so this this scenario one, the top part of it, okay, I got it, so the bottom.
So the scenarios are, the top is the same, average one, yeah. So then this one, if we stayed this route, the district would save twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars and we would share the negative two percent of um savings. However, if we go to, you can scroll down, Deb, then, and we're going to go to scenario one, choice three tier, again, everything's same except for the premium, so if we go down this chunk. Yeah, so if we look on the backside then, this is actually going to increase the employer's cost by almost eighty thousand dollars. So this is saying the district is still going to fully fund the eighty-seven point four percent. So scenario one is strictly, actually, everything is the same, other than it's a different provider and different figuring out much. Otherwise, everything is identical to what we have now.
Okay, and the choice three tier is the one that includes Marshallfield Clinic.
Pretty much anywhere you want to go, you can go, anywhere, yeah, anywhere in the continental US.
The options or the scenarios you're presenting us aren't giving us different plans, they're just.
Well, there's still two plans.
No, but what you, but those plans have been options no matter what to our employees.
You don't have to offer both.
But what we're looking at or you're, what you're presenting to us is changing how what our percentages that we pay and how much is in the, how much would we contribute to the HSA.
Kind of more choose one of those options.
The only difference is between any of the scenarios.
Yes, yes.
So the plans aren't different for any of the scenarios, it is just literally what the district's portion would be and what we cover for premium and what we put in for HSA.
Yes, the following, uh, yes, the following is here.
So there's three scenarios that they have.
No, I just wanted to clarify, I feel like that everyone's thinking we're looking at different plans.
Yes, well, I think maybe, maybe they have it, but, yes, so there's still only going to be the signature and the choice network. That's, those are the only two options um that are going to be available.
And every employee gets to choose from both of them, we don't have to choose one or the other.
That's what she's saying, yes.
That's correct.
You can say, hey, you know what, we're not going to do choice three at all, but that's.
Got it.
That's not right, I think that would be difficult for us.
Well, I have a solution to that, so.
And let's focus on what we have to decide.
Okay, right. So then let's go to scenario two, please.
People want to call you Grace, my daughter wants to think we have good day.
Probably. Okay. So I'll get her to still concentrate on the lower half, projected cost. Okay, so then this, what I did here, if you all remember, on our eighty-seven point four percent, we were about twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars and about ten thousand dollars for the district's share premium. So on the signature plan, we would still pay about eighty-seven point four percent of the premium. Okay, so it's almost break even, it's going to cost the employer about two thousand dollars. We've got, in HSA, I increased because we were going to save twenty-nine thousand, remember? So now we're going to pay a little bit more, but what I did was I increased the HSA from five hundred thousand to seven fifty to fifteen hundred. So I shared, in here in quotes, I shared the employer's savings through HSA. Okay? Then scroll down to this blue section. By doing it this way, the district still has about a negative two point oh seven and the employee actually has about a negative two point one five, two point one six. If, just by doing the, I just rounded the dollars versus throwing in odd number dollar amounts. So now if we go to scenario two, choice three, excuse me, the choice three tier, in the lower section, I'm keeping these two dollar amounts of the premium, the district paid the same. We're still giving the extra seven hundred and fifty or fifteen hundred in HSA. The district's cost is still only two thousand dollars. Let me scroll down a little bit here, Deb. Now, instead of a hundred percent sharing, the negative two percent increase, the employee's share is going up. But don't get scared by that percent just yet because it doesn't actually equate to a whole lot of dollars. Because this is that percent um, like twelve percent, okay? All right, so then scenario three, excuse me, scenario three was Jason and I just decided to throw out. That was just totally bad. Um, so we jump to scenario four. Scroll this, look up from the bottom section again. So what I did here, instead of sharing the twenty nine thousand dollars of savings that was showing up in that first scenario, instead of sharing it in the HSA, I shared it against the premium. Okay, so the HSA is back to five hundred and a thousand, but I upped the, the premium um a ratable share.
So what percent?
It's not a percent anymore, it's a flat dollar amount. I didn't calculate a percent. So in scenario two, I had about the same eighty seven point four percent. So this one, all I did was take that extra amount that I put to the HSA, I took it back and I, I applied it up then to the premium. So it's the same pot of money, I just moved where it was getting out of the employer's. Yep, so if we do this, the employer saves just shy of seventeen hundred. And then the employee saves and has a negative fifteen point six five, about average um decrease in premium cost by doing it that way. So we could either put it in their HSA or give it back to them by covering more premium. And then you can scroll down to the choice three option. And go right to that section, yep. So it's the same dollar amount, it's the signature, but the employee then has got a bigger share. This here is still identical, it's still just under seventeen hundred dollars savings to the employer and the district, excuse me, the employee has about an extra forty five percent in the cost. So this great big sheet, you're comparative, okay? Because all these individual pieces is quite large.
Can you go to the big one over?
Can you call you Grace?
Can I just ask one quick question?
Yes.
The, so we're taking this total amount of savings and reallocating it, but it, these numbers are assuming that a hundred percent of people take insurance, so. So.
Right, so.
I'm struggling because I, I don't have it on a white, like, I don't have it on a whiteboard for me, but does it equally, like, the HSA as an example, if you're putting five hundred or, like, does it all dollar for dollar even out if only fifty percent take or?
I did not do all that analysis, like, all that's.
It would not affect that really, no.
Yeah.
So it's, it's scary to give it back when you don't know, like, when this is based on a hundred percent and we don't know what we did last month of the HSA. So I, that adds helpful just to know.
You mean you don't know what we did last month?
Well, with the HSA, how many, or not the HSA, but the pay instead of benefits, like, how many will take that versus?
And we have no way of knowing that because we have to approve this before I can ask them.
No, I got it, yep, I understand, I just.
Let me process this once, this might help, because I know, I know what you're thinking.
You're giving me full amounts, you're saving, knowing that everyone isn't gonna take it, so how does that?
If we look at our, if we, that isn't going to, looking at the data we were able to derive from the surveys about the opt-out benefits for staff, it would, Pam, you can jump in if I interpret this incorrectly, it would actually be more, that we would see more benefit, not less benefit. Like, if that data is not completely flawed of what staff said.
Well, correct.
Because for every person who wouldn't take the drop, the insurance cost.
But we don't know how it compares to choosing one of these options, which is putting more money into their HSA or, like, you're taking all of the savings and reallocating and not knowing how many people we actually have savings or reallocating. So it would even be helpful to have the scenario of what we think it would be and what that real number looks like, even though we don't know, I mean, I know that. I'm just, I'm having a hard time processing if, if that many people don't take it, is this a wash? Like, is this a hundred percent, but if it's seventy five percent, it's just seventy five percent? But it all equals? Because I, I can't see that, I can't.
Because the, the dollar amount is the twenty nine thou, the twenty nine thousand dollars, so if one person.
But we don't, don't get me wrong, we don't have to change anything. We can keep it all, scenario one, keep the entire savings.
Well, so I have a question.
Don't get me wrong on that.
Savings, so you're telling me, so twenty nine thousand dollars in savings, that's only on signature?
Yeah.
So if you have the eighty thousand in increase, that savings doesn't happen? Like even, if you, like, this might be a wash, so you may be.
That was, everyone might choose the signature.
Right, if maybe you're a choice between the two, not everyone's gonna be in the signature, not everyone's gonna be in the choice three.
Well.
So the, those things, we might not have thirty thousand savings, we might be able to be paying fifty thousand more. So if we start allocating savings that don't exist, then we're just making it more.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that, and I, you guys are correct in that, is only if, if one person who takes the family plan right now during the opt-out portion does not take the insurance, that's twenty three thousand dollars in savings, that's not included in this presentation.
Right, but we can't.
So there's a lot of projections, for sure.
I mean, this is all projections and conjecture, but the proback savings that may not actually be savings, it may actually be fifty thousand in the hole. That's really hard to swallow and it's difficult for me to look at it as financially, just like, responsible. Are we doing the responsible thing? And I, I completely agree, like, if we have a savings, I do think we should, should share that. However, it's very difficult when we don't know if there's gonna be a savings. We might not be the, the negative at all, it may be a positive that we're paying more and we don't know how the opt-out, especially with it being the first year. This is a lot of balls in the air that I feel like could really splatter the face.
But are you like a proponent for whatever savings there are distributed through a better HSA plan? Like more HSA or just off the?
Are you asking me or me? Well, because I, I couldn't tell you were looking at. But Pam and I felt very strongly about it, whatever savings we realize in this, just because of, um, when, when you talk about the employee retention piece, that we've been focused on stuff and, and being able to attract folks here is passing along those savings. But, but understand what you're bringing up here is that there's some things we don't know yet, uh, but passing along those savings on to the employees.
By employees, so there's two ways to pass that, one through HSA ones and one through.
The percentage. So we're.
Or you keep everything the same like scenario one.
And it's gonna be one of the options that we're born to know that.
In October, we can use that as more of a, a supplemental pay in October.
Right, because that'd affect us by.
She can just go for those and take all the shares.
That is an option.
And you'll know where all the numbers are, you'll know, okay, yeah, we had fifteen people opt in, dropped out and so we have this savings and we have this other savings.
This option, maybe this option is the one you guys were referring to. If we were to want to choose option one, everything would stay the same. It would follow that format that you're talking about, right?
So can we review them on here quick and then we can have some more discussion on it?
And that is one of the projections.
So the scenario one is keeping everything the same, yeah. So what's highlighted in pink is, so this is the savings in the district, the twenty nine thousand. This would be the extra cost to the district, about eighty thousand. We could be anywhere in between, okay? The HSA stays the same, five hundred and a thousand. The impact to the employee um on this plan, if they stay with the signature plan, would be about uh monthly savings on a family plan of five dollars and seventy seven cents and a monthly savings on the singles plan of two dollars and fifty five cents.
Is the signature plan proposal one, like here, is this what she says?
It's the middle one, yes.
Okay, so that's a signature.
It actually says signature like four or five lines down, I think. And then if you do the choice three tier and you still keep, um, the district at eighty seven point four percent, okay, so that's where it's costing the district some, because now you're, you're, you're sharing that increase in premium. Um, an employee's share would be fifteen dollars and seventy one cents cost per month more and six dollars ninety one cents for a single more. I will say what majority of the districts is doing, I don't know, Jason, if you've read all the emails with the um, WV and um Wisconsin Valley Business Association is talking about it too, because most of those people are in this co-op. They are staying with their signature plan with usually what they pretty much always did and that's all they're paying for, for their um choice three and the employee has to cover the remainder, okay? So if we, if we look at scenario two, okay, so we could leave the HSA at five hundred and a thousand. Okay, I did it with seven fifty and fifteen hundred. So that part is still plenty flexible. But the premium dollar amounts in there, um, even though they're flat dollar amounts, it's eighty seven point four percent of the signature plan, okay? So that's doing what the majority of other districts are doing, they're covering the signature like they've always done and making the employee, if they choose choice three, pay one.
Which would be the entire five percent of the choice three increase.
Right, right, right. It'd be a little, well, it looks like fifty nine percent, because that's what it says here, but it's fifty nine percent of twelve percent.
Yeah, and, and that would be incentivizing employees in those districts to take the, the more affordable policies, frankly, what they're doing this year. But if you want the, the premium policy, the, the tier three, you're just gonna pay the extra cost as an employee.
Right, so I mean, if you, if you look at this, then it would be twenty one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars um savings to the district if we back off that extra amount. Just the difference between these amounts is twenty one two fifty. No, thirty one, thirty one two fifty would be saving two fifty. Like, the difference between the total HSA if you kept this scenario um two at five hundred and a thousand. So if you kept it at seven hundred and fifty and fifteen hundred dollars, um, a singles plan under this, the um signature would be a savings to the employee of twenty three dollars and forty eight cents and for a family, forty seven sixty seven. And if they went with the choice three tier, it would be a fifty one dollars sixty two cent cost on a single monthly to the employee and for a family, monthly cost would be an extra hundred twenty two dollars and eighty one cents. That's factoring in the change of the HSA. Now, if you don't wanna do that change, the dollar amounts would be two dollars and sixty five cents savings on a single and six dollars on a family per month. And it would be a seventy two dollar and forty five cents additional cost per month to the employee and a hundred and sixty four forty eight for a family. So you just, just disregard this line with the extra HSA portion. So then scenario four, I had put the extra in the premium, so this one, if you, if you're not thinking about doing it, I have no, I have no skin in the game either way, but if you're thinking of not even doing that one, that would be fine, um, because that would, like you said, that could open you up to be somewhere in between. It could end up, like you say, costing fifty thousand. We don't, we just simply don't know this first year at all. We, we have no numbers to go on. The employee on a single plan, if, on the signature, if we paid the extra in premium, would be about nineteen dollars and thirty two cents in savings and for a family, would be monthly a forty three fifty savings. If they went with choice three, the tiered, they would pay an extra fifty five seventy eight cost per month for a single, hundred and twenty six ninety eight for a family. So I think if you look at the, the scenario three, if that's where you're more inclined to stay, I think.
Scenario two.
I'm sorry, yes. Scenario two, if you wanted to still keep your HSA at five hundred and a thousand, just disregard this line here that would have the extra two fifty and five hundred. Then you could see, you know, the, the cost. And then if you figure out the extra thirty one two hundred and fifty, I mean, you'd be back to your savings of the twenty nine thousand for both of them. So you would save the twenty nine three ninety eight for both of them. You would take a couple of dollars for the rounding.
And this would go into the actual.
We need to know because we, yeah, open enrollment is May tenth.
Staff are maybe know this information to make those decisions on the open enrollment, then we'll have a better idea what the opt-outs and all these other, we'll get more firm numbers. What we need to present is to staffs to make those decisions.
So you said that you already presented this, Deb?
Oh, no.
No.
They got the insurance information because the insurance company came and just explained to them what the new plans were going to be and then they will also be coming here on May tenth.
They were, the percentages of the different plans and the different options and what you presented staff. This could be what.
And who was in network, who was out of network and how they're gonna, they'll work with anybody that wants um to work.
I, I, I just wanna comment that I, I feel it's really important for us to not, like, I don't think there is savings. And until the savings are realized, I, so like, you know, option one, you, you've said, or it's been presented a couple of times, there's twenty nine thousand in savings, except if everyone took the other plan, we actually would pay eighty thousand dollars. So there wouldn't be twenty nine thousand in savings, it would actually cost the district eighty thousand.
Yeah, so it's anywhere in between, yeah. Because worse, it's, everybody takes all or everyone takes the other.
Correct.
Um, historically, when we've offered two plans, because we've done that for a long, you know, like, four years before this. I think even our first two years in the co-op, we had two plans. I would say the majority of people took the cheaper plan. Um, and back then, I, I think Marshall Clinic was in both plans, because I believe we had security health. I think that was getting Aspiris in your plan was the more expensive one.
So remind me again, who are the providers in the signature plan?
They're all the, oh, who are the specific doctors' clinics?
The health providers, the healthcare providers.
Let me see if I brought the list with me, this is.
Maybe everybody except Marshall Clinic.
Okay, that's easy.
If you want, Marshall Clinic.
They have to be in this.
You have to be there, okay. So we have an existing relationship.
Yeah, so in the signature, we have um Aspiris Health, Aurora Health, Bellin Health, Children's of Wisconsin, Gunderson, Holy Family Memorial, Reesford Area Medical Center, the Medical College of Wisconsin, Sada Care, UW Health System, Aspiris Affiliates, Ona Joint, ENT, Allergy Associates, Orphance, Rheumatology, Gastrointestinal Associates, Heinrich Surgery Center, Radiology, I mean, there's a ton of.
Everybody but MCHS.
Yes, and the other one is Marshall Clinic, um, Oakley, I can't remember.
Ah, Eau Claire.
Okay. Oak, Oakley.
Raider.
Raider. Okay, yeah, that one, and then Mayo, um, the one in Wisconsin, is added.
Eau Claire and La Crosse.
Is added to all those other options you listed.
And then. So I'm all about putting as much back into employees, so I don't want it to be, you know, it, I just don't know that we have the information tonight to actually assure we're giving a savings um in choosing, that there is actually a savings to reinvest, until we know what people are doing.
And, and we could, as mentioned earlier, is that if, if, once we have more definitive numbers, is we could look at getting money into that supplemental component too, if you wanted to do that. I would just say this about the worst case scenario of saying, like, what if everyone takes one plan or the other? We have to do a projection to assume that that's probably not going to happen. Do you know what I mean? Like, it's likely there, there's going to be, worst case, like, even split maybe, but as Pam said, I think most of the time.
We may see that the first year, just because people are afraid to change. You know, we probably have a split right now.
If you're a doctor, then you are comfortable with that.
But even split isn't gonna give us savings, so, and even split is still gonna cost us money, right?
Not the eighty, not the eighty, but yes, it was still.
It won't cost us eighty, but it's still gonna cost us money.
It'll cost us something, yeah. Yeah, um, you know, my gut tells me that at least for this year, we should keep the HSA contributions the same. Keep them at five hundred and a. Keep them at five hundred and a thousand.
And then go with.
With option one?
With option scenario two. To keep the premium of flat dollar amount for both plans. And then the Choice Three, the employee picks up a little bit extra.
Yeah, that's.
I think she was talking about scenario one.
Yeah, I think I was talking more about scenario one.
When you say keep the premium the same, the same as last year, the same as the percent?
The same, like eighty-seven point four percent of the, the signature plan.
Yeah. Yeah, so scenario one is what we have this year, which is eighty-seven point four percent of, well, we don't have two plans, right? But it's eighty-four, it's eighty-seven point four percent.
That's the percentage we've used for several years, yes.
And so option one says we'll pay the same on both, no matter, like, we're gonna share the increase, and we're gonna share the decrease.
If you're looking for, can I just interrupt a second, though? If you're looking for a savings, if you're doing it that way, you're not gonna ever get it. Because the employee has no skin in game. You know, if you're looking for it to sway more people away from the more expensive option, you won't get it.
Well, I don't know that.
That's what you're looking for.
I actually am not looking for that, because I think that the reason we want to have the third scenario is because we are located in an interesting spot, that one of our major medical centers, that might mean a lot to people, they actually don't have a choice but to take this other plan. And so for me, it's, it's not about trying to convince someone not to take that, because my guess is if they could take the cheaper plan, they would just want to do that. But not to penalize someone who has a longstanding relationship with a health plan net. And again, it's because of where we're located. We have such a unique situation around that piece. And so, you know, the, the two different options are just, now, we take more of a risk with option one. But again, even a five percent increase in health insurance isn't horrible, right?
And that's still shared.
You can help at ten.
Well, right, I mean.
It's a couple of years, so.
Yeah.
That, that option marginally is exactly, was put in there to, to have that option available, is, is, there's nothing really to coerce people. It's to mean those things that you just said, if you want, folks, if, if you, if you want to maintain that relationship, it's available. We're sharing them the cost of that, so that, that's why there's the three scenarios.
Yeah. And I think those existing relationships are especially important when you're talking about specialty care. You know, I mean, primary care, yeah, we get relationships, but, I know in my family situation, our specialists are very, very important.
And you could still go to those specialists if, if, like, you're, so say you do the narrow network with signature one, and you're at Aspiris, and they say, we want you to see with your heart specialist, your cancer specialist.
Referral.
They will refer you, so you can always get the referral.
Yeah, a virus would never refer you, because a virus will not be referring to. Not to, again, I think it's just the uniqueness of the fact that we're right in the middle of a county, where depending which direction, and I know they're both in good directions, but it's just a unique area. And I always feel, I, I feel like, and maybe our employees don't care, but I feel like giving worse healthcare to one network versus the other is a worse decision for our employees than giving a little extra HSA.
Well, if we're talking about employee retention, I mean, this could be a big deal for someone who's really connected to a provider.
Correct. I just want to strike a record that we're not giving worse care, I mean, we're just having two different actions.
Right, but in their minds, that may be the choice that they're thinking they have to make.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's just.
They're gonna have growing pains or, you know, they're gonna have change pains, I guess, no matter what, because there are going to be things that you and I covered that are not gonna be covered anymore.
Well, and I, I also will say, if you were presenting something with a narrow.
They're, they just said certain prescription medications, you may have to switch to a different brand.
To a different brand of that.
You know, we have free healthcare for mental health in our plan, and that's one of the reasons why it's going up twenty-two percent, because that was something that they got in to get us into WCA to start with. So that's the free healthcare, no matter where you went, is gone now for mental healthcare, you have to use a provider. I mean, you still get mental healthcare, it's just not, you're paying, it's go wherever, it has to be a new thing.
And, and I just wanna say that I'd be having the same conversation, if we had security health there and a virus was out of it. So this is not about preferring one over the other, it's about where we're uniquely at. And seeing what that matters to employees, it's, it's really, like, we have to be careful around the fact that both of them will matter equally to two different people, because of kind of what that looks like.
What are, what are, were you trying to, like, you're trying to get the cost for the same goal?
No, just if we're gonna pay, you know, we can't control what the premiums are. I wouldn't suggest that we pay eighty percent for one and eighty-seven percent for the other, because we're making them pay the whole rest of it to actually get, to give that care where we live, and one being preferred over the other. I would recommend that we would do the eighty-seven point four percent for both, or whatever percentage we can do for both. Now, they're still gonna pay a little more, because we can't help it that the premium is different.
And in the general scheme of things, over five percent when compared to much is very reasonable.
Well, and hopefully, there is a mix, and it all equals out, right? I mean, I just don't think we're gonna actually have a savings, which is kind of what we talked about in the beginning, if we go that route. Because I think there will be some people who will choose the Tier Three, which will cost us, and some that will choose signature, which we'll save on, and maybe they'll balance out.
And then we've got the wild card, the.
The opto, which is a good wild card.
Well, and we have a lot of new pieces that we don't have used before, so we don't know what we don't know. And so it's hard to, hard to say, yes, absolutely, let's put this money back in, when we don't know what's gonna be there, right?
And can I play devil's advocate, though? What if, will you have people on the signature network that get, I'm not saying well, I'm just saying, could you? Has someone get upset because now you're, you're funding, I mean, I guess, maybe not, because there are, not everybody takes the insurance anyway, but you know, if you change the Choice Two or Three plan, you're getting, for a family, you're getting like twenty-five hundred dollars extra. And premium paid, so you're getting a little benefit, it's the same percentage, yeah.
Percentage, yeah.
Not everybody takes health insurance.
Right.
And now, if you're not gonna take health insurance, you're gonna get a benefit.
You're gonna get a benefit for that.
If you're eligible for health insurance.
Okay, right. I, I move. That we accept scenario one. Oh, okay. So I just, I just, I move that we accept scenario one. Someone can second it, we can, we can continue to discuss.
Is there any discussion? Guys, we're not very quiet, or not very allowed, we guys have questions, comments, any discussion? Okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There would need to be a second motion to approve the HSA dollar amounts.
I make the motion to approve the district contribution to eligible employee HSA for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four at five hundred per single, a thousand per family.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do you see that there's another motion here to approve? So the flat dollar amount, do we need that if we're not doing the flat dollar amount?
That was in scenario two.
Yeah.
Okay, so, right, moving to scenario one, there. All right, so we, we did the HSA also. All right, let's move to summer school.
All right. So you have the summer school packet, big changes. We condensed it down to a four-week period for multiple reasons. Number one, for the cleaning schedule, a lot of day management to get in, and the building is ready for staff to come back. That was something we heard from staffers, that it was pushing the outlook to when they could get in in August, because we had to wait for summer school to be completed. There's also a breaking point of how many courses we run in staff, and then FTEs that we get to make it, where it's actually beneficial, while still understanding it's about enrichment opportunities for our kids to, we kind of did a survey, both with staff and folks, who found out that this four-week seemed pretty, looking at the numbers of kids that registered for the third section, you could see a drop-off. It was kind of a burnout phase, so it's condensed into a four-week session of the same hands and about the same number of offerings in general.
I'm not sure, because I, I haven't really.
It, it's pretty similar, it may be off by a course or two, but we wanted to make sure we still had that, that array of courses offered to students. So we're pretty happy with the, with the format that's being offered. So, any questions?
I think it sounds like fun.
Yeah.
I wish we had summer school when I was in school.
I said it last year when I came here, I was very impressed for a district our size with how robust our summer school attendance was with the students and the number of staff that stepped up and taught courses, because a lot of districts, that's the issue, is you can't find staff willing to teach it, and that's not an issue here, so we're very fortunate. They, they are able to, there's no specify that they can take any of our courses and we'll, we'll support it, so, yep. We encourage that. Mr. Sherwood is reaching out to families to make sure they know that other supports are available.
I make the motion to approve the twenty-three summer school courses and the teachers present.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We move to the first reading of the updates to policy eight thirty-four, New York School Forest.
So we made some, some updates to the permission piece. One of the things we added in there was that if we had employees who were employees of the school district, but were not residents, they weren't able to get a permit on it, we added that to the permit, because we felt like that should be something you should have in there, whether you do, if you were an employee and work here, you should have that same ability to be able to hunt on the school forest. And we only approved, then what else was I missing? I think that was the main change, was just the.
Just a lot of clarification I'd like. First, I'm hoping it must be employee, we had a resident on this, on the third page, but we didn't have anything on the first part where they had to be a resident, so we just kind of like, thought we'd put it in two places, so we knew, and then added the employee.
The, the big change would be adding the employee availability that, that was not a resident.
And then, just to reiterate that there was no hunting during school hours. And we changed name to just District Division.
Okay, any discussion on this, are we all, okay, moving this forward for a second reading? Okay, so then, if I remember correctly, we did not make any changes to the new policies, six sixty-one, four sixty, seven twenty-three, point three. So I would undertake a motion, if I'm personally inclined, to approve all of those at once.
I'll make the motion to approve the second reading on policy six sixty-one, policy four sixty, and policy seventy-two, seven twenty-three, point three. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is approve elementary school math curriculum purchase.
So you saw my email update, so effectively, what happened, what, what the process was, is that the original intent was to, to budget for this after July first, during the course of the pilot. So the K-five staff, Heather had done pilot, multiple programs, and then they started to settle down on the Bridges program that they selected. They went and did some site visits to some school districts that are using it currently, including Maricón, which probably was the most geographically close. Once they made that decision, Heather found out that there were supports available as far as onsite training for staff. And in order to get this and get the materials in the hands of teachers, which if you know, but the teachers wanted this stuff, they were like, we want to see this stuff, we want to be able to start going through, through it, when we're assigning summer curriculum hours, we sent those forms out, we could go for staff to sign up for curriculum hours, they want to be able to allocate hours to that. So the decision was made then, at that point, we need to get the materials here now for the teachers, and we need to get that training available. That was why it was bumped into the, the current year. And anything over five thousand dollars requires, requires board approval for purchase. So it's kind of the reason it's kind of being brought in a disjointed kind of way here, but it was with the intent that we wanted to make sure we had that training available to staff, and, and that they were able to get the materials and get, and get hopping on this. And I, and I shared with you, I have experience with this program from my former district, it's been there for three years. K-five and the road math growth course were astronomical. Am I gonna say it's completely because of the program? Certainly can't say that, obviously, the staff have some role in that, but I would tell you that I was a part of the pilot, albeit as a high school principal, watching them go through the pilot, and they settled on programming. The scores would indicate that it is successful, same has been shared that the districts they visited up here are highly satisfied staff are with the, with the program. What I would tell you is, what I heard from staff in my former district, the K-five staff, there's a lot of front loading in a steep learning curve for staff, which is why this was really something that was beneficial, is to get it in their hands and let them start the training and get people on set to help, so that they're ready to roll with it in, in August and September, when we have the students back.
I move to approve the purchase of the elementary school math curriculum for a twenty-nine thousand, making it forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we move to the April fourth, twenty-twenty-three school board election results.
So.
Certification of the election in all the votes.
So we have the certification, and both Rick and Nate have signed the papers.
So they don't have to read it?
Didn't.
Nope, they've already done it.
They, they read it.
Oh, okay, so we don't have to do it here?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, I should have clarified that.
Um, then we do appoint a school board representative for CISA five.
And this will be approved at the May meeting, so this will be tonight, make a decision, I don't think. But we wouldn't be able to do approval at the May, May meeting.
But the, the conference is May eleventh, and our meeting is May eighth.
So that's why we want to talk about it now, just so whatever it is, is, can put it on their radar, but it won't be able to be officially approved until the May meeting. So. So Nate's on that train?
Yeah. I was, I had like, you don't do it right now?
No, 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 I don't want to do CISA, no.
Yeah, then it sounds like you should do it from the case of.
I think that typically happens, doesn't it?
Yeah, I actually, well.
Have we traditionally had some actually done this? I feel like we haven't.
We can do it virtually.
Yeah, you can do it.
I think we always, Jason was in the bed, but then anyone's actually done it since wow.
Yeah. I think there's a virtual option.
Nate, we said it, it's.
No, Nate said he cannot.
Oh.
He did not say he could do it, he said he cannot.
It's a girl nominee.
All right, it looks like nobody here is available on May eleventh, so.
We still need to make a motion to have somebody.
You have to do that at the May one anyway.
Yeah.
But I still need to get, they don't have a woman, who that rap is.
We're always, he's not here, so it's a fair, it's an important thing about you, about your people.
Is that, like, that was encouraging as far as cases.
I make the nomination to elect, to nominate Rick winters to apply for, for the school board rap at CISA five annual convention, May eleventh and CISA five, I mean, we know we can't, so.
And this is, this is, yeah, we, we can certainly.
Right.
And this is actually for the CISA rap for the entire school year, or the whole year?
It's just for that.
Not just for this whole time, but for the whole year.
It's, it's for those donations.
Which convention, though.
No, so I would say that potentially, then with Rick being a new board member, I don't know.
Yeah.
Because that would be.
Not a significant thing. Why you want a meeting where you just miss the meeting, but you're also the representative? So thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, so what, like, is the meeting, what time is it?
Seven P.M.
Seven P.M.
And I would say. And I would say, Nate, as, I, I think Manny referred, I, I can't imagine that, that we've attended a regular. And, and I'm in regular contact with Jeremy Beal at CISA, like.
I'll nominate Nate Gordon to be our CISA five representative for the next year.
And you're pretty sure it's Nate.
That will have to be approved in the next meeting.
Yeah, so we know it's Nate, so we can't deny it's Nate, though.
And it's, it's recorded, so.
Was that on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. The legislative report.
Joint Finance Committee is starting to hold hearings around the state, and they have one in Oakley, or next, this week, tomorrow!
And the Dells on Wednesday.
And the Dells on Wednesday, so if anyone wants to go, like, joint finance.
I'm actually going all day Wednesday, so if anyone wanted to go and wants a ride, I'm attending all day Wednesday.
And I believe there's a virtual, I swear I got a virtual option.
There is a virtual option. It's not, it's just a submitting your comments is the virtual option, there isn't like, it isn't live.
It isn't live?
No.
Okay.
Um, and W A S B didn't have their legislative day, like, a week ago, ten days ago, something like that, yeah, so. Central Wisconsin Days had their legislative day last week, and one of the things we advocated for was, um, spending reform, and, you know, more funds for municipalities and school districts. So. One of the largest topics at the first, um, joint finance hearing was school choice. It was, like, people came with signs, it, it took up most of the, like, it didn't take up most, but it took up a larger majority of the public hearing than any other topic, so, and it's anticipated that that won't be any different in Eau Claire and.
Yeah.
And, um, so just, just isn't that quite, from a school perspective, um, it's definitely been one of the, one of the biggest topics at the public hearings. Well, and that first hearing was in Wachishaw, so southeastern Wisconsin is, um, definitely a hotbed of that topic.
Okay, anything else legislative?
I, I will tell you, obviously, I had a good conversation with Senator Testa during his visit, and Representative Van Groot will be here at the end of April. Nate attended for that, had a good conversation, um, and, uh, I'm looking forward to having Nancy come and visit as well. Senator Testa was very impressed with the facilities and the folks who've been there. And we did have a conversation about budget at the very end. I, I'm very optimistic, as I always said, is that I really believe that all folks, like, people in their communities support their schools, like, you know, it's not a political divide, it's that people support schools, like, you, you know, you, you have a lot of folks on both sides that are from small communities that you already mentioned, that the school's kind of a light blood of the community and stuff, so I'm optimistic that folks are gonna be able to come up with a, with a solution here to some of the issues we're confronting. So, I tell you what does help, is having these elected officials come and visit and see all the great things we're doing. You know, one of them seems very impressed about was the, the offerings that we're able to give to our students with a small district, a smaller community, and do it physically responsibly, you know, we talked to them about, you know, how with our large assigned fund balance, and, you know, there are ways to do this, but certainly, there are some restrictions that we have related to the budget, and how, how monies are allocated and spent, so. So, that would be my two cents.
Okay, do they have any further comments? Okay, then I will undertake a motion to move into closed session, because I see statute nineteen thirty-five, one. What model is this?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.